I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Note for the record that all council members are present except Mayor Conway who is unable to join us this evening.
Thank you. That moves us to the agenda. And do we have any changes, additions, or deletions?
I have a suggestion to remove item B2 under Old Business. It's the GVID resolution because we have a separate meeting agenda at the end of this meeting that will cover that item.
Could I ask a question about that?
Sure.
I guess this is a city attorney question. Can't we just combine the two meetings like we usually do? Or does it really require two separate meetings because of the circumstances?
It's on. If we had an agenda that was noticed as a joint, a meeting of both bodies, then it could be combined into one discussion. But if you want to do it here, you would need to do it as a council and then you can do it again at the end of the meeting where you have a separate agenda item to deal with the action you would need to take as a district. If you prefer to do it all at one time, it could be kicked to the next meeting as long as there isn't a timing issue. And perhaps-
We can't do it tonight in a combined way. That's my question.
You can't?
Can't.
You cannot.
Alright, that was my question. Alright.
And then also we want to, and I'm not sure if we do that here, we're changing the title of the ordinance on the new business, item B, to the disposable.
I think that you could actually, when that item comes up, then propose that change to the ordinance rather than modifying the agenda now.
Okay. And then if no one has an objection, I see that, well, we have slips to speak on both items, so I guess leaving the orders, fine. So if we have a motion to approve-
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to proclamations and presentations. And item A is declaring October 2014 as Fire Prevention Month. And do we have a member of the public that, or the fire department that would like to speak?
Members of City Council, thank you very much for declaring October Fire Prevention Month here in the City of Brisbane. You know, throughout the year, as the fire department, we were always out talking with the community about fire safety and the importance of installing smoke alarms and testing them in their homes. But the month of October is a very special month for us because it's really where we really ramp up our efforts and we're out there in the community promoting fire safety. This month, our firefighters will be going to both of our schools and talking with the students about the importance of installing and maintaining smoke alarms in their homes, which also is the theme this year through the National Fire Protection Association as well. We'll also be out Saturday, a day in the park. We'll have our public education trailer out there and talking with the community. And Saturday, October 18th, will be our Fire Service Day Open Houses in Pacifico, Daly City, and here at Station 81 in the City of Brisbane. So we encourage everybody to stop by that as well. So on behalf of Fire Chief Ron Myers, the Brisbane Fire Department, and the North County Fire Authority, I'd like to thank all of you for declaring the month of October Fire Prevention Month here in the City of Brisbane.
Thank you. So this is the proclamation of the City of Brisbane declaring October 2014 as Fire Prevention Month. And whereas the City of Brisbane and North County Fire Authority is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas US fire departments responded to 370,000 home structure fires, these fires caused 13,910 injuries, 2,520 civilian deaths, and 6.9 billion indirect damages. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. When a smoke alarm fails to operate, it is usually because batteries are missing. And whereas in fires considered large enough to activate the smoke alarm, hardwire alarms operated 93% of the time, while battery-powered alarms operated only 79% of the time. And whereas an ionization smoke alarm is generally more responsive to flaming fires, and a photoelectric smoke alarm is generally more responsive to smoldering fires. For the best protection or when extra time is needed to awaken or assist others, both types of alarms or combination ionization and photoelectric alarms are recommended. And whereas the City of Brisbane and North County Fire Authority responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education, and whereas the City of Brisbane residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan or more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Month theme, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, Test Yours Every Month", effectively serves to remind us all of the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries, and we can take to stay safer from fire during Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now therefore, I Terry O'Connell, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim October 2014 as Fire Prevention Month and encourage all City of Brisbane residents to heed the important safety message of Fire Prevention Month 2014 and to support the many specific safety activities and efforts of fire and emergency services. And I would like to present this to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, just looking forward to seeing you guys on Saturday.
Great. We'll be out there.
Yeah, I have one question if you don't mind.
Sure.
We're talking about smoke detectors here and we know how important those are. But what about the carbon monoxide detectors? What's the situation on that?
Well, it is now state law that they need to be in homes, outside the bedroom and on every level of the home for homes that either have an attached garage, fuel-burning appliances, or a fireplace. So if one of those three are present, then you have to have the carbon monoxide alarm in the home. And generally where that's being caught is obviously in new homes being built or if you pull a permit for a remodel, the building inspector's going to check to make sure that those are in. Just like traditionally where, when the laws were changed, where you had to have a smoke detector or alarm in each bedroom, they would check when you did a remodel. Now that's also what they're checking for as well as the carbon monoxide alarm. If it falls in that criteria where you have the attached garage or gas field appliances or a fireplace in the home as well. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that moves us to oral communications number one, or excuse me, presentations. Beth Grossman for imaging.
Imagining, excuse me. Great. Thank you all so much for inviting me to report on the first United States Department of Arts and Culture imagining that took place right here in Brisbane. And in the summer of 2014, a new people-powered United States Department of Arts and Culture produced a series of 15 imaginings in towns and cities across the United States. Each imagining was an arts-infused collective visioning of the future for that community. I am a nationally selected cultural agent for the Bay Area for the United States Department of Arts and Culture, which I'll now call USDAC. These acts of imagination brought together diverse groups of artists, activists, community members to firstly envision their communities in the year 2034, 20 years from now, when the transformative power of arts and culture has been effectively integrated into the fabric of society. And secondly, to begin to strategize the creative tactics for how to get there. So I designed our imaginings especially for Brisbane and it was held at the Community Center. There we go. July 13th. And I thank the City of Brisbane so much for the support that we got for allowing us to use the space and some staff time. And so basically, I invited participants to be citizen journalists and we assembled to create the first issue of the Imagining Times. And our tagline is "Living the news we want to read." We had a three-hour press deadline to write and illustrate the newspaper filled with headlines and articles, collage pages that describe our community 20 years from now with art and culture at the core of all initiatives. And here's my planning committee. These are all my facilitators. We had 50-plus people, so we needed a lot of people to lead small groups. So when people came in, they signed in and were invited to make creative badges that explored the idea "Art Is". You'll recognize a number of Brisbane residents in this presentation. That's Jeff Cotton. And here's an example of one of the beautiful badges that people made. And then we started the event. We were honored to have our USDAC Chief Policy Wonk, Arlene Goldbard. And she came and we did a typewriter ribbon-cutting ceremony. And I chose the typewriter because I really wanted to give a sense of like the old newsroom where, you know, you would have a deadline and the typewriter would be clicking away. And really wanted to also symbolize the idea of really going low-tech and that this was really about people connecting and thinking together and creating with each other offline. So here's the group of 50-plus citizen journalists assembled in groups and they were led by editors that were heading up editorial departments of immigrant and human rights, the natural world, environment, technology, social systems, health, public space, faith, spirituality, and community, celebrations, education, and of course, anarchy. And there was a large group of 20-somethings in that group. The directions were to imagine that you're in the present moment, 20 years from today, and your job as a citizen journalist is to represent what our community and the world looks like to somebody who knows nothing about it. Create a page for our newspaper filled with a headline, short article, and collage drawing that describes our community in 20 years with art and culture at the core of all initiatives. And then write it in the present as if it was happening when you wake up to read the newspaper in 2034. So we got to explore the idea of what do you hope to see right here in our community? What could this place look like if we brought our full creative selves to envisioning and building it? And how can we make it real using the power of art and culture? It was a lot of energy and we had great magazines and everyone was trading images and working together. It's one of my favorites, cutting the Defense Department, literally. And following an hour of working together on individual pages that envisioned our future, the pages were shared among the editorial group and then the editor reported back to the large group. And notes were taken on large paper on the wall. So here's some of the highlights. And remember that people were invited to think big, crazy, and out of the box. So public spaces are sustainably designed and provide natural environments for community interaction. Freedom of communications is a human right across all borders and pidgin languages function as a lingua franca. The Department of Anarchy reports that Hollywood has been destroyed along with its confining images of body and gender standards. Our social systems are a sweet crazy monsoon of life with easily accessible and available healthy foods, affordable and sustainable housing and energy. Mental issues are now a thing of the past because people feel connected and working in community. The Health Editorial Department reports that wrinkles are now a fashion statement and grandparents are involved with raising healthy grandchildren. Big agriculture and big pharma are dead, replaced by small plot organic farming and the return to ancient herbal knowledge for all healthcare needs. The Editorial Department of the Natural World declares that we have everything we need right here. All knowledge of our environment is available if we listen and connect with networks of nature to educate ourselves, heal, and create harmony with nature. Education is completely free and accessible to all individuals of all ages. It's not standardized. There's no teaching to the test. And art and the wonders of science are central to all aspects of education. So afterwards, my amazing group of editors and facilitators stayed on late into the evening to debrief and help organize and scan the pages of the Imagining Times. And it's posted online. I'll give you a real quick preview and then maybe we can post the link eventually. And while she's setting that up, we also proposed the idea to print the newspaper and then to bury it in a time capsule on San Bruno Mountain. And we'll unearth it in 20 years from now and see the vision that we, let's see, maybe go back a couple, one page there. There we go. So there's the headline and then you can just sort of flip through it kind of quickly and get a sense of some of the beautiful collages that people made. So we'll post it online so you can have a chance to actually read it if you'd like. And then just if you go back to that PowerPoint for one more picture. And so finally, the very last one. Finally, in closing, we all got together, we stood up, and we said together, "This is an act of collective imagination." So the next step for, there we are. It was a great group of people. And the next step for the United States Department of Arts and Culture is that I'm going to be opening a field office in the Bay Area. And there'll be other field offices opening around the rest of the country. The key cultural agents are all getting together in New York in November to plan the future. And I also want, I'm happy to be able to share this with you because I think this is also, this kind of a tool is a great way to do envisioning for other kinds of city projects that we might want to see happen because it creates an environment where everybody's really working together and they're being creative and their hands are moving. And there's a way that ideas can happen that we might not imagine otherwise. So thank you so much for all of your support. We couldn't have done this without the Brisbane, City of Brisbane, support for the arts.
Yeah, that is awesome. Beth, so when is the field office going to be open?
Sometime in the next year. I'm in the process of organizing it. And I'm also trying to strategize how to, like, this is the center because I'm here, but I need it to really encompass the whole Bay Area. And I'm also reaching for the most diverse participants and communities that I can reach. So that's going to take some time and some relationship building.
So I guess the field office probably won't be in Brisbane?
I don't know. Well, I'm here, so there's a good chance that it could be.
Alright.
Yeah.
I think that'd be pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah, it would be. Really, it'd be amazing.
Yeah. Think about it.
Okay, well, I'll be happy to talk with you more about that.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
You have a question or comment?
I just want to thank you for, you know, putting this together and reaching out and finding out if this is even possible. It's great to see the community come together and I can see from the pictures that there were people there from even outside of Brisbane who came. I recognized a couple of Daly City residents. And so I think that it was a success and look forward to maybe seeing it again.
Yeah, I guess I do have one thing that's not clear to me and I'm sure you can answer the question. It's not clear to me what this initiative is trying to accomplish. It's a national program, right? So what are they trying to do?
Well, so a lot of people say, "US Department of Arts and Culture, is there one?" And we always answer, "There should be." And so the idea is that we really are trying to, it's not just like an art world organization. This is an organization that really wants to champion the power of arts and culture in all aspects of society and as a way of building community, providing, giving people a sense of connection and meaning in their lives, ways of creating a sense of place in towns and communities, ways of working in city government. Basically, the idea too that I have often promoted is that there needs to be an artist at every conference room table because lots of times just the fact that I'm sitting there, it just, people will like start to open up and think in a more creative way, a more connected way, thinking about, you know, the sense that when I take one action, my action is always going to impact others. And I think that that's one of the things that having an artist at the table in any kinds of decision-making and planning always brings people together to think in that way. So that would be sort of one of the primary initiatives. And just also creating a sense of diversity, connection between communities, supporting communities. One of the things that the USDAC did recently with the Ferguson shooting is they put out a call and a lot of very important activists and artists all got together to say, "We've got to put an end to this. And how can we make a call for artists to really support that, get the word out?" And so we're taking on all kinds of different issues also around the environment, around the climate march that happened in New York. There was a lot of United States Department of Arts and Culture activity and also helping people find out how can they engage to participate in those larger events. So this is one way too to really connect Brisbane to a larger national organization.
So, but how is it funded?
Not very well at this point. It's a voluntary organization, top-down. They had some seed money to kind of get things started and get a website up and that kind of thing. But now the first effort was to like kind of get the word out and get cultural agents to go out and create these imaginings. They're also asking people to sign up as citizen artists on their website and asking people, "How do you want to become involved? What kinds of skills do you have? What would you like to see happen in your communities?" And then from there, they're hoping to really build enough momentum to secure some funds to be able to support people to do primarily the leadership work, which is, as you can imagine, takes a lot of time. Yeah. Good question. Yeah.
Beth, it sounds like a very interesting relationship-building organization. And what is a wonk?
I don't know how to answer that. It's just, I think she wanted, you know, they kind of wanted to play off the idea of, you know, kind of what happens in our government sometimes when people just go on and on and on talking and trying to... So I think that was, it was kind of a joke in her taking on that title.
Well, I wish you luck with it and I'm glad that the city could support what we have supported so far.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Beth.
That brings us to oral communications, number one. And I have a slip from Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. How could I resist coming up and speaking in front of the Mayor Pro Tem, Terry O'Connell? First of all, I want to thank Beth for the imaginings because I attended. And I thought, "Oh, God, getting drug into another thing." And it was really-
Good pick of you.
Huh?
Really nice picture of you.
Thank you. It really was an amazing event and it was very exciting. And I got all excited about it. Here I am, cutting up magazines and making a collage like I haven't done in decades. And it was very visceral and made me feel very connected. And so often nowadays, in our education system, it's- And so often nowadays, in our education system, it's, it's smet, you know, science, math, engineering and technology. That's what's crammed down the kids' throats and, um, and placed at a high value. And we forget about how important art and culture is in inspiring us to a higher level of humanity and how often art, uh, speaks so much, uh, louder than, uh, words. And a good example of that was last week at the Recology Artist in Residence. There was an absolutely amazing piece done by a Brisbane resident, Jerry, I mean Jeremy Rourke, and it just knocked my socks off and it was all done with garbage. And it really made you, uh, feel this interesting connection with how we move through time and what we do with the resources we have. But that's not why I put in my slip. I put in my slip because first of all, I'm really glad to see those dumpsters gone. I think they became an, an attractive nuisance. But the problem that they were to alleviate has not gone away. Indeed, it's gotten worse because of the dumpsters being an attractive nuisance. There is an incredible amount of garbage tucked away still on Tunnel Road and it's now appearing in lots of other places. I noticed whenever the dumpsters were like full or closed, garbage would appear now on, you know, Guadalupe Canyon Parkway and over on Lagoon Way and on Sierra Park Parkway and everywhere else. And so the city of Brisbane needs to take a hard line in curbing that. And one of the things that made me think about it a lot was this connected thing, this, this, um, circulation element of the general plan. Um, and on here, there's a part where it talks about, um, purpose of the par, users of streets, roads and highways, means of bicyclists, childrens, persons with disability, motorists, movers of commercial goods, pedestrians, users of public transportation and seniors. And yet we persist in allowing Tunnel Road to be in the state that it is in, which is extremely dangerous, not only for vehicles, but for pedestrians, bicyclists, anybody else, and animals, who might be traveling along that road. And I drive it every day on my way to work. There is no place to pull over if somebody comes across the double line 'cause the sides are covered with rubble, debris, rocks, pieces of concrete, you know, bushes that have absolutely grown, overgrown the roadway and it is dangerous. And God forbid, somebody should wanna ride their bicycle from the train station to one of our facilities here in town. The other day, I'm driving down Tunnel Road, guy's on a bicycle coming towards me, you know, and he's on where he's supposed to be, and here's this big old truck going around him, coming completely into my lane to pass the bicyclist, and I have nowhere to go. I am already to the edge of the pavement. It's dangerous and we persist in allowing UPC to main that, maintain that property like a dump. And now we have, uh, the, this new, a lot of more traffic because Golden State lumber has increased and now they're crossing across the road with their trucks pulling in and out without looking. We have the paratransit people now on Tunnel Road with a whole lot more heavy traffic there. We have increased truck, truck traffic from the soils processing and soils, uh, storage place and it's dangerous. And I think the city council and the city staff need to take a hard line with UPC and make them clean up the damn road and the sides of the road so that meets safety stand, minimum safety standards. And while I'm at it, the Brisbane police need to have a talk with the, um, tankers that come in in the morning and blow through the right-hand turn from northbound Bay Shore onto Tunnel Road. And they don't stop at the stop sign. They just blow right on through. They kinda look and, phew. And I, I pulled over one day and actually went in there and yelled at one of them and said, you can't do that. And I talked to the general manager and he said, well, we can't control the drivers. So the city needs to pay attention to those things 'cause it really, that whole area is a safety hazard and I know UPC kind of holds it over our heads and I'm sorry, it just doesn't fly anymore. And I'd also like to know, while I'm, I haven't been here for a while, uh, how are you measuring how high the dirt piles are? I know we had set it now at seventy-five feet above, uh, medium, median sea level rise or whatever it is. Sure, your staff can tell you exactly what it is, but I'd like to know, is it being measured and monitored on an ongoing basis because, um, not only is the pile getting really, really wide, it is getting really, really high. And I noticed tonight when I got off the freeway, you can't see the mountain anymore when you get off the freeway. So, I'd like to know what the monitoring status of that is and, and where we're at and what's the current height and is it exceeding seventy-five feet? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, does, any, I don't think we have any answers as far as, um, pile heights at this time, um, prepared or ready, but what, do we know what the monitoring situation is with that?
My understanding is that, I don't know if Randy feels comfortable responding to it or not, but my understanding is that, that they actually will be having less dirt than what was originally contemplated in the MOA, uh, by the end of, uh, the year. And they've actually have just notified us a couple days ago that, excuse me, that they got a contract to move fifty thousand yards off of the site. So we actually may start to see some of the piles, excuse me, I'm having a tough time with my voice here, uh, fifty thousand, uh, cubic yards off of the site. So we may actually see the piles coming, coming down in terms of, of height in the near, near future. Um, and there are some other contracts that they're working on with regards to that. Um, as far as the road goes, I mean, it, as we all know, it's, uh, it's actually owned by Universal Paragon Corporation and, uh, it's a, um, there's a license that the city own, has to, um, create, uh, a use for the public to use it. Um, it was actually, we looked at the license agreement this week as we had another cause to do so and it goes back to nineteen seventy-six.
I'm not, I'm not able to really hear you there, I'm sorry.
The, the license agreement actually goes back to nineteen seventy-six and, uh, um, I think we asked our city attorney to take a fresh look at it, but, um, I think my reading of it anyways, that, you know, it, it definitely was always tied to the idea that, uh, a development would take place and then that's the, the point in time that, uh, the road would be approved to city standards and, uh, se, um, the city would take over the road. It's, it's interesting and that goes back almost forty years. Um, and it's still in the same condition it is. We have been working with UPC, um, and Recology, um, Police Department, Public Works Department, my, myself, um, with regards to, um, a renewed effort to try to keep the area clean from trash. As you know, you looked at some franchise agreements in the last couple of weeks, you'll be looking at some more, um, next week with regards to waste removal and that's part of it. Um, the on-call, uh, responses is part, part of that as well as just the requirement of the property owner to keep it, uh, clean. Um, there's requirements under the regional water permit now that, uh, that are different from what they've been in the past. So there certainly is a renewed reason for keeping the area clean of debris. Um, it's always probably gonna be a challenge, um, but we are doing some, uh, some police work out there. We're gonna be doing some signage. Um, the, uh, property owner is gonna be doing some, uh, weed abatement, uh, shrub removal, um, and some cleanup and, um, you know, we're, we certainly are gonna try to make, um, an ongoing effort and, you know, I mean, critique whatever you want in the past, where, this has certainly been something that's been a high attention for the city for some time and we'll continue to do, do what we can to try to keep it clean from debris.
Thank you. Um, any comments?
No.
Yes?
Yeah, well, I always bring up, uh, just to make sure nobody forgets, you're talking about, you know, forty years ago when this was all sort of set up, uh, a part of that agreement was that there would be a separate bicycle path. And it was in fact constructed, but over the years it's been obliterated. And so when we get to talking with UPC about doing some, some kind of remediation to deal with, uh, dangerous circumstances of which there are a number, you know, one of which is the, is the lack of a separate bicycle path and it, it, I mean, I've mentioned that in a number of forms, it, it really is dangerous and yet you have the irony that, uh, the San Francisco Bicycle Map actually directs bicyclists down Tunnel Road. Uh, if you look at the markings on the streets in San Francisco, they say bicycle path, you know, right down to the Bay Shore train station and of course they just continue on Tunnel and, or, uh, if you were there during, uh, you know, the, the bike, the bike celebration of biking day, uh, it's amazing how many people commute on Tunnel Avenue by bike, a lot. Uh, so it, it is a serious issue and, and I hope, um, I know that the Complete Street Safety Committee is, uh, one of the things that they will be looking at is, is what to do about that. Um, and one of the things maybe we can do is to see if there's any way to resuscitate, you know, what used to be there.
Yeah, we, uh, along those lines, we've asked the city attorney, particularly, specifically Teresa, uh, to take a look at the license agreement from seventy-six and to outline, um, obligations of the parties with regards to obligations and rights of all parties involved. Um, of course, that agreement actually precedes UPC's ownership, so they, they assumed it when they purchased the property.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I'm, if you're very brief, Michelle.
I don't understand why they're not held to the same weed abatement standards that other private property owners are held to, uh, especially along the roadway. So I don't understand why they're not held to the fire safety and weed abatement that other properties owners in Brisbane have been held to.
I'm not quite sure we have staff that can answer that at this time unless, um, I, I don't think we-
Yeah, I'll-
-have an answer for that.
I'll talk to the fire department about that. It's, I don't believe it's ever been considered a weed abatement area, but we'll, we'll take a look at that.
And then if, um, if UPC is willing to do some of the tree trimming and shrub, shrub cutting back to give us a little more visibility on the road and perhaps a better opportunity for catching the, or a deterrent for the illegal dumpers, that might be helpful also.
Yeah, I think their, their, their plan is, is twofold. One is to do just what you indicated, but also to create some barriers so that cars can't pull off the road for the purposes of, um, being able to stop and dump, which is part of the problem.
Well, that can be a double-edged sword if you can't pull off in an emergency either, so.
When do you think that, uh, we're gonna get that correspondence, you know, that feedback from meeting with them?
Well, we've been meeting with them. Um, and again, I've had the city attorney take a look at it. Again, this is a private property and it's not subject to a, a permit per se.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, they, they're working on trying to do, uh, to deal with this. Um, they have very incentive to do it because there's, you know, regional water board permit issues that we have that we can use in as, as an enforcement tool.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I think, I think everybody here, I think it's fair to say that everybody that's involved in this is, is working on it in good faith. You know, nobody's blowing it off, nobody's shrugging it, shrubbing it off to somebody else. Everybody's trying to work on it. It's just, you know, a difficult issue. It's an isolated area that is just, you know, subject to this kind of, um, behavior, bad behavior that people, you know, have and where they'll, you know, feel that they can dump stuff. So, I mean, we're trying to deal with it, um, through all the various angles, you know, the shrub re-clean-up, the, making it more difficult for people to pull off the road, enforcement, signage, um, you know, if we can enforce, we, we've got a provision in the waste in our agreement with South San Francisco Scavengers and also with Recology that, you know, there'll be a kind of a reporting mechanism if there are dumps and they do find material within the dumps that could lead us to us, uh, somebody that's, uh, you know, could be, um, a suspect, I guess, for lack of a better term. Um, so, you know, I mean, I think we're gonna pull out all the stops in terms of trying to deal with it as best we can.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
This is a, one of those perfect situations where it's, be a great idea to bring in an artist to solve this problem where people, we need to like call attention to a problem, we need to change behavior. Um, one possibility would be to work with Recology 'cause they do have the Artist in Residence Program going on there. Say, look, we have this problem. Maybe, you know, engage the community and the artists, uh, to engage in community and thinking about how we might beautify the area, create signage, create a community events around it, um, lots of different possibilities. So this just sort of makes my point of why there needs to be an artist at every table. Thanks.
Any help that you can give in the, in the trash abatement arena would be welcome, would be very welcome. So, thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak on oral communications one? Moving on, um, to the consent calendar. And it's to approve the city council minutes of August twenty-first, two thousand fourteen. Item B is to authorize the staff to initiate an amendment to the circulation element of the general plan for the Complete Streets Act of two thousand and eight. Item C is to accept Brisbane's share, which is five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety cents of the Regional FEMA Firefighters Assistance, Assistance Grant for the purchase of fire ground survival training, mobile trailer and instructor with the North County Fire and adoption of Resolution two oh one four dash four one, authorizing the execution of grant agreements with the state of California. Is there-
Move approval?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to old business, item A, to consider the adoption of ordinance five eight eight, waiving the second reading and adding chap, chapter fifteen point eight five to title fifteen of the municipal code and amending section fifteen point one two point two eight oh concerning an Art in Public Places program. And do we have a staff report?
Um, uh, city attorney, uh, Michael Rousch, um, provided the staff report on this item. Um, at the last meeting, I understand that council had, um, some amendments it wanted to propose to, um, the legislation and, um, the staff report included a copy of, the current copy of the legislation with those changes made, um, in a red line fashion. So at this point, um, it's my understanding that the, that the changes have been made and council's concerns have been addressed and at this point, um, the ordinance is, is ready for adoption.
Lori?
So I, I reviewed the, the changes and I see that they all were made except there was one thing that I recall for, and I have in my notes that, um, that Cliff had suggested. Um, so in the implementation guidelines, section fifteen point eight five point oh six oh, I believe, um, Cliff, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you had suggested changing it from shall, as in the implementation guidelines, shall include these various provisions A through F to may, so that it wasn't required that all of them be addressed in the guidelines. And I wasn't sure if that was still something you felt, um, strongly about, but I wanted to bring that up, that I noticed that change had not been made.
You know, I, I asked my wife, who was quite involved with this, well, what do you think of these, uh, implementation guidelines? She says, yeah, you know, I think they should all be in there. I said, okay, and I'll leave it as shall, instead of leaving it, you know, instead of putting it as may. So I, I'm, I'm fine with it, but, you know, I guess it's up to the council too, so I can go either way.
I think they're all important items to have included and so that they shall be included would be, I think, a good thing unless someone else feels strongly otherwise.
I think it's fine as is.
Okay.
Michelle.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, no, I'm good.
Do we want to open this up for members of the public to speak? And I have no slips. Do any of the members of the public like to speak on this issue? Seeing no requests, I'll close the public hearing. And then council discussion.
I think we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to-
I would move, uh, adoption of ordinance number five eighty.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Which brings us to old business, item B, uh, considering the formation of a new financing authority between the city of Brisbane and the Guadalupe Valley Water District in order to assist the financing of future city projects.
Yes.
Staff report.
Um, so the purpose is to try and provide as many opportunities and options for the city to get the best ability- for the city to get the best ability to finance the projects we have going forward in the future. One of the methods that we have used in the past is the Brisbane Public Financing Authority. What that has allowed us to do was to create lease revenue financing mechanism. So this is very similar to what you hear a lot of cities did in the nineties where they monetized their assets. So Pittsburgh got a lot of credit for this back in the late nineties where they leased out their own buildings to, they sold their buildings to a private company who then leased it back to the city. So that provided cash infusion for Pittsburgh to do, and Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, not Pittsburgh, California, to do a number of their capital projects that had been put on hold. And then they would pay lease payments to the public, to the private company that had owned the buildings. And then at the end of the term of the lease, they would revert back to the public entity. So what the city did a number of years ago was actually create its own entity that would be able to hold assets of the city, such as city hall, such as the marina or the swimming pool or other things, and lease that back to the city. And then it would sell lease revenue bonds to the public that would cover, for that value of that property. And then that money would then be used for public projects. And we've used it for a number of different areas, such as our water and sewer tanks, or such as our city hall remodel. And we would hope to be able to use it, again, going forward for something as simple as the water and sewer projects that we've got on the, that we need to do. We have about five million dollars worth of projects that we need. So you either can do it as a lease revenue bond, or you can do it as a rev, revenue rate. Actually, for the city hall, we would, for utility, we'd do it for, for the rates. But if we have other projects like the marina dredging, if we were to finance that, we would need to use that as a public financing authority. So there's a number of ways that you do it. The reason we cannot use a public financing authority in the future is the redevelopment agency no longer exists. And the original public finance, Brisbane Public Financing Authority was set up as a joint enterprise between the city of Brisbane, the Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District, and the redevelopment agency. Now that the redevelopment agency no longer exists, the Brisbane Financing Authority cannot sell any new debt. It can still hold the old debt it has and the assets it currently has, and it can still pay off the debt it has, but it can't sell any new debt. So we need to change, we need to create a new financing authority. We have the ability to do that. Since we have the GVMID and the city of Brisbane, they can create a new financing authority. One of the suggestions made by a council member was maybe we don't call it the Brisbane Financing Authority. That might be too much close to the Brisbane Public Financing Authority. There might be a confusion as to which entity holds which assets. So the suggestion may be is to, in the resolution, change the name to the Brisbane slash GVMID Financing Authority. So it has both of those names in there. And that would be one of the recommendations that we would make as to changing the name for that. But this is a normal method for trying to help the city use the asset, assets it has in the best way possible. And that's why we're looking to doing this. The resolutions have to be both adopted, adopted by the city of Brisbane and the Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District. The GVMID will hold a meeting later in this evening for its resolution. But what's on the agenda right now for the city council is the city resolution. There is also a suggestion, now that we have sent out the letter to utility users for the utility bond, or the utility projects and the utility rate increase, that you can add a whereas, on October first, the city of Brisbane sent out a letter notifying property owners and water users of a potential rate increase to take effect in March to pay for utility projects. So that would be another suggestion as to adding a whereas to this resolution. Hopefully I didn't get too confusing in trying to explain what the purpose of why you do these things are. I apologize for that.
As a point of clarification, would you repeat the proposed name change?
Sure. The proposed name change is the Brisbane slash Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District Financing Authority. So that way, anybody who's buying debt created by this agency would know specifically who's backing this debt and where it's located.
And basically, this is changing, it's, it's changing our name because of the change in structure with the redevelopment.
Correct. Because the state eliminated, the state eliminated redevelopment agencies, so therefore we can no longer issue debt with the redevelopment agency as part of it.
Because they don't exist.
Because they don't exist.
So they, we'd never get their signature.
We would never get, you would never, you're never going to have another redevelopment agency meeting in your life.
Yeah.
Just successor agency meetings.
Okay. Any member, any questions for staff?
Just the only thing I would point out, which I'm sure Stuart would agree with me, is that the way I look at what we need to do here, and I guess the city attorney wants to weigh, in terms of the financing authority, we're really talking about just adopting the Resolution twenty fourteen thirty-nine of the city of Brisbane?
Yes.
And then the, the second resolution, that will come up under the GVMID meeting?
Yes.
Am I right? Okay. And then the other whereas you were talking about actually is with the, the Resolution thirty-six, talking about the financing of the water and sewer capital improvements.
Yes.
Right. So that's having to do with Resolution twenty fourteen thirty-six, which is item C. Am I right?
Yeah, I thought, it seemed like you combined them.
No, I think that that would have to do with item one, the two thousand fourteen thirty-nine.
No, I don't think so.
I think, you know, Councilmember Miller is right.
You're talking.
When I read, when I read the email, I was thinking, I was reading it's about the same one, but I think you are right. You, you meant that the other one was for thirty-nine, not for thirty-six.
Right, the.
Yes, or it's for thirty, it was for, sorry, for thirty-six, not thirty-nine.
Right.
Yes.
Can you clarify that? What was for thirty-six? The renaming?
No, the, the renaming is for thirty-nine.
Okay.
And then for thirty-six, it would be to add a whereas that this, we notified the property owners and the rate payers of a potential rate increase. So I, I'm sorry for misreading that email.
Okay, but we'll add that in then.
We're not, we're not dealing with.
No, we're not doing that yet right now. That would be C.
In item C.
That would be in C.
So the only changes we are making, if it's, if it's okay with our council, is the changing of the name of the financing authority.
And, and you could call it anything you would like.
Did you talk to the bond counsel about that?
I did. You can call it any, he told me you can call it any name you would like.
Right.
Now, how, how does adding GVMID clarify it? Because the GVMID was a party to the, the prior one as well and.
So, so I think the concern is if, you know, the previous one was the Brisbane Public Financing Authority. And then naming it the Brisbane Financing Authority is very similar, so people may get confused between the two of them. Where if you go Brisbane slash GVMID, it's very distinctive from that.
So is that gonna be abbreviated as BGVIMIDFA or just BGFA?
I would say it'd be, you know, if we were to do it, it'd be BGVIMIDFA.
That would make it more obvious.
It would make it more obvious.
Okay.
I was thinking, I, I told Councilmember Miller, I would shoot for the name Bob. Buy our bonds, but I didn't. So as he said, you could call it anything you would like. And so if that, if that would be, you know, I think, I think it does help distinguish the two. So that way, somebody who's quickly looking at, you know, different, different types of bonds from us would not be confused by which ones were previous bonds and which one are the current bonds.
Who was issuing what bonds and.
Right. Especially when we're dealing with the state.
Right. That, that's why I thought it would be important to make a clear distinction. And that comes from my service on the oversight panel, where you have these people from all around the county and the county comptroller. And then we have to send it to the Department of Finance and the State Department of Control and Audits and the Comptroller. And so they get confused. I mean, even really basic things, they didn't quite understand something like, you know, the marina has a parking lot. I mean, they didn't even get that. So for sure, they would be confused by this. So I thought, let's do our best to make sure that we give them distinctive names so they won't be saying, "Hey, you're doing something illegal," you know, which
Right.
Wouldn't surprise me at all would, would come from Sacramento. Because they, they just don't read that carefully. So that's, that's a reason.
Okay. No other questions?
Any other comments?
Makes sense to change the name.
So do we want to open the public hearing to any members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing no hands, close the public hearing? Pardon?
Oh, you have, you can do both.
I think we've done that.
It can make sense, yeah. And so I would move adoption of the Resolution twenty fourteen thirty-nine with the change in the name that we've discussed.
And, and before that, I would like to ask the city attorney, the resolution has Quint and Thinning LLP in the left-hand corner on that. This has been reviewed by the city attorney's office and been approved. And it's not, I'm not sure who, can't tell you quite who Quint and Thinning are.
Quint and Thinning is our bond counsel.
Right.
Okay.
Specifically for, I mean, Brian Quint is the city's bond counsel who specifically helps us through our financing to make sure that whatever, everything we're doing is legal and that it meets the requirements of the IRS for, you know, make sure things are tax exempt, that should be, or taxable, that should be.
Okay. And so this has been reviewed by our city attorney?
Yes, we're comfortable with it.
For content. Thank you. And so do I have a motion to?
I need a motion, so I guess you need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And that brings us to item C, which is consider adoption of Resolution two oh one four dash three six, expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed with proceeds of obligations. Staff report.
So this one is we're trying to begin the process of completing our two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen capital improvement projects that, for the water and sewer projects that the city council approved last year. We, this is where we are going to sell a five million dollar bond to pay for these. We've talked about that process in the past. We began that process by mailing out the Proposition two eighteen letter. It went out in the mail on the thirtieth. And people do have that now. You will be reviewing the rate structure back in November of two thousand and fourteen, and that is all part of the letter. But in order for the sta, for staff to begin working on those projects and to be reimbursed for the work that they do, you need, you need to have a reimbursement resolution and intent to be reimbursed from the bond proceeds. So if we were to do work prior to the bond proceeds and you do not pass this type of a resolution, then the bond proceeds cannot be used to reimburse the city for previous expenditures. But once you pass this resolution, the city can be reimbursed for expenditures that it makes for these projects, even before the bonds are sold. So the sooner we can get this passed, the sooner I can tell Randy that it is okay for him to start working on the projects. And just to remind people who don't have the staff report in front of them, there are four projects that we're, that we're trying to complete. They are the Bay Shore Boulevard Eight Inch Force Main Underground Relocation, the Glen Park Pump Station Upgrade, Pressure Reducing Valve Construction Fire Main on Anis with a line FGHIJ, and the Anis Pressure Reducing Valve, and then the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System Replacement, or what I call SCADA. So those are the projects that we're looking to complete.
Thank you.
And this is where we should add the whereas in this resolution to say that we had mailed the letter on September thirtieth to homeowners and to rate payers.
And, and my.
Any questions?
Further suggestion was that the letter be Exhibit A.
Okay.
And the reason for that is that that puts everything together for the record.
We will do that.
Because the letter gives a lot of information that, that's not in the resolution.
Yes.
I do have a question. Madam Prue, Tim. So Stuart, can you talk about the, the reserve that we have in the utility fund?
Sure. We've had a couple of good years where people have been, have used more water than they had in the past. So we do have some money available in cash. We have three million dollars available cash in the water and sewer fund. As you know, there is a policy of the city council is to have a minimum of twenty percent of its utility fund in cash reserves for future emergencies. There is also, you know, my concern as we are working through the drought, that a number of people are going to begin to reduce their water usage. And the unfortunate part of that is that they, the people who are asking to reduce their water usage is the landscape people, which is our higher water collections. So, you know, we had set rates back when, during the recession, when people, there was less water being used. And then as recession ended, more people used water, we got more money in. But now that we're looking through the drought, my guess is we're gonna get back towards, you know, more of that recession level of water usage. So I'd be concerned about using the money that we have in reserve for anything other than to protect rates moving forward, until we're sure of what's going to happen when the drought is over and what the base water usage is going to be. Because the, you know, there's another concern I have with the drought, we are encouraging people to change over their landscaping for, to a more drought tolerant landscape. So even as we finish through the drought, if people do make the changes that we're requesting, we will see a reduction in water use going forward. So we will need to, you know, I think having a larger reserve so we're not, you know, quote unquote penalizing people for saving water. Would be a good idea going forward for the near future.
Okay. All right, yeah. You, you talked about how in the Budget Finance Subcommittee that we would be looking at, analyzing, is that the appropriate amount and then reporting that back to the full council?
Right. I mean, there's a number of reserves that we need to start looking at as a city, and that is one of those issues that we need to tackle as a city and as a city council and a community.
Sure.
Sorry, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Right.
No.
So make a motion to, or we'll open up the public comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing no show of hands, I will.
Tony.
Oh.
You're awfully quick, Terry.
I was awfully quick. I wasn't looking to the back of the room.
I was trying to be a gentleman and give somebody else a chance.
Okay.
I got that wonderful letter that Stuart sent out.
Can you tell us your name?
Tony Varios, one twenty-two Warbler.
Thank you.
And my reaction to it is that I, I felt that the rate charges for the zero use and the very, the zero, one unit, two unit, three unit use were on the high end and that the charges for the very high use should be higher. Now, I, I don't have the statistics that the city has. Maybe Stuart's got statistics from the water department on how many people have reduced what percentage. But I know that we've conserved in our household from the beginning in two thousand and we can't cut it down hardly anymore without being really ridiculous. So I don't mind paying what we pay. We have to pay for the basic infrastructure and like Stuart pointed out, as people conserve, then the city gets less revenue. You have to balance this out. I understand that very well. But I don't think some of the business community that are large water users and the large homeowners associations, I think they should probably pay more than what's anticipated at this point. And that would give them even greater incentive to save more and do the conversions that Stuart's talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. In response to that, I, I don't think this resolution is raising the rates and we certainly will have a hearing about the raising of the rates at a future council date. So it is something to be aware that as usage goes down, we are all going to be paying more per gallon of water because we won't have quite the economy of scale. But I think that the staff will look into that very thoroughly about where the fair balance is with our water usage.
You know, we are having the meeting, I think it's the third. Um, you know, I, we are having the meeting, I think it's the third, the third Thursday, I think, is November sixteenth, November twentieth? Hmm? I don't know, it's either the sixteenth or twentieth, I I think it's the November twentieth is the third Thursday of November, which is when you will have the hearing on this. I, you know, I, as you would imagine, I'm beginning to receive telephone calls and emails on this. What what I will do on the, for that November twentieth is create a list of comments that I've received, and I will at that time be able to be prepared to respond to all the comments, so that way the city council can have a full understanding of what the community is thinking and how the subcommittee went through the process to create the schedule that it did.
That'll be all good information to give to the public and and, uh, make available before it comes to us. Yes.
Yeah, I'm I'm on that subcommittee, so, um, we may need to meet, you know, once more before November twentieth. But I just wanted to respond to Tony that the the original proposal even was more onerous on the lower users. And it was the council members who said, nah, that doesn't seem right for people who have really done a lot to conserve. So the the problem is, uh, and this is where you got to see, as you mentioned, the full statistics, the number of people in all these categories and how much you generate from from various levels. And even if you really raise, you know, some of those very high end ones, very high, it doesn't get you that much more money, cause there aren't very many of them. Uh, so that's kind of the the analysis you have to make, and I think the more of that information we can provide, you know, for the public, so they can see the basis of the of the decision, if they can think of a of a better way to do it, that gets us to the same bottom line, that would be great. Because we don't want to penalize the people who have been doing the the real conservative, conserving, and the and the subcommittee was very concerned about.
So with that, we'll close the public hearing and council discussion.
I think we're ready. So I'll adopt resolution two thousand fourteen dash thirty-six with the whereas that Stuart had recommended.
A second?
Yeah, second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that brings us to new business, which is considering adopting resolution two oh one four forty, directing the staff to forward the draft two thousand fifteen through two thousand twenty-two housing element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development to review. Pull out my giant staff report.
Uh, yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'll try to make this as, uh, painless as possible. The housing element, as I'm sure you're all aware, is one of the mandatory elements of the city's general plan. It's probably the only element that the city is obligated under state law to update on a regular basis. Um, the last cycle we went through was a two thousand seven to two thousand fourteen cycle. The current cycle is, um, running from January, um, from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two. Sharon, can you give me the? Yes. And the the deadline for, um, for adoption for this next cycle is January thirty-first of two thousand fifteen. And again, the, sometimes the question arises as to what are the implications of the city, um, complying with these state obligations in terms of timing? There's definitely a trend in state law to to put a little bit more, um, motivation for cities to comply in terms of a timing standpoint, thank you, in particular. Uh, in particular, there are a couple of things that are important. Uh, one is, um, there's, uh, an element of funding eligibility for MTC funding, um, discretionary funding. One of the, um, requirements for eligibility is to have a certified housing element within the prescribed deadline. Uh, the other, which is really quite punitive, I think, is the fact that if we fail to adopt in a timely manner, then we're obligated to update on a four-year cycle as opposed to an eight-year cycle. So that would be two for the, two for the price of one in terms of housing elements in the next eight years if if we fail to adopt within the a timely manner, so. So I think those are a couple of things to to consider. Yeah, the purpose of tonight's meeting is not a hearing to adopt the housing element. Really, all we're trying to get is authorization to submit the draft housing element to the state, which again is a required part of the process. They have a statutory requirement to review it in, within sixty days, get their comments back to us. Uh, that would get us, uh, leave us some time at the end of this process to adopt the through January. So again, it's a little bit of an iterative process working with the state in terms of making sure their comments are addressed or working through our comments. But again, that's something that usually happens in a thirty to sixty day window. So really, the purpose of tonight's meeting is is to ensure that the, um, the document that is submitted to the state uh, does reflect the council's policy direction. And we don't want to submit something to the state and then the council in consideration of adoption makes significant policy changes, cause that would, again, trigger another round of HCD review. So we're trying to avoid that, we're trying to make sure the, the, all the policy issues are addressed adequately and that that really does reflect the council's direction before we submit it to the state. And again, the the purpose, um, of the housing element is prescribed by state law is the plan for housing needs for all economic segments of the community's population, and that's balanced with land use, environmental, and other city goals. Um, most of the issues that the Brisbane has, most cities in the peninsula or in the Bay Area have, is not market rate housing, it's low and moderate income housing, and that tends to drive, all the sort of decision-making in terms of the number of units we need to plan for. It really relates to low and moderate income units, not not market housing as a rule. It also includes an identification and analysis of existing and projected housing needs, as both economically as well as within various needs groups, special needs groups, uh, seniors, uh, large families, et cetera. There's projections included in the housing element as to the, those kind of needs within the community, homeless, uh, very various, uh, special needs groups. And the housing element also includes a number of goals, policies, objectives, and implementation programs. And as I think, if you've seen the document or looked through it, you'll see that structured, uh, throughout the document. Implementation, uh, programs with specific dates of, uh, dates to, uh, perform, you know, when certain programs or policies will be implemented by, and you'll see that throughout the document. And probably one of the most, always one of the most difficult issues here in Brisbane is always going to be the identification of adequate sites for housing. Is again, a requirement of the document, uh, and it's addressed, and I'll go into that in some detail. So again, by way of background, again, the previous housing element from two thousand seven, two thousand fourteen was adopted in two thousand eleven. I know that seems pretty far into the cycle, but, uh, that was primarily due to the fact that the state granted a number of extensions uh, to all jurisdictions to, um, to adopt that, you know, that was occurring in the recession primarily, and there was a lot of, um, some latitude given for local jurisdictions to to move forward with adopting the housing element. So actually, although we adopted it in two thousand eleven, that was in compliance with the state deadlines at the time. Uh, given that was only a couple of years ago, however, that means the previous housing element was reviewed and certified by the state, and it was a decision in looking at this two thousand fifteen to twenty-two element as more of an update. We didn't want to remake the wheel, you know, reformat the document, restructure it in a completely new way. So really, we focused on updating it as needed to reflect, you know, either changes in state law, updated demographic information, et cetera. And some of the the key updates would include update of demographic data. Cause again, when we prepared the previous element, the two thousand ten census data wasn't available, so it's been updated to incorporate that information. It also outlines, uh, the policies and programs from the last element that we were able to implement over the, you know, the three-year cycle since the last adoption. It does incorporate a number of changes, i- if you look at the previous housing element, there was a number of policies and programs that were the obligation of the redevelopment a- agency to perform, low mod housing, set aside funds, et cetera. So all those kind of references to, um, redevelopment have been modified or eliminated from the current housing element. And again, lastly, circling back to a recurring theme is the identification of the, uh, adequate housing sites. And, um, in this particular housing element, we have two components of that. One is to address the carryover from the previous housing element, which we did not, um, accomplish the required rezonings, uh, by the the deadline specified in the previous housing element, and then to accommodate our housing, uh, need, uh, for the next, uh, seven-year cycle that was established. So again, the shortfall from the, um, the numbers from the last housing element ends up being about two hundred and ten units. Our obligation under that that element was four hundred and one units, so that was our obligation. Uh, we, uh, you know, identified a number of sites that met part of that, and then we also committed to a couple of key rezonings. One was the southeast Crocker Park mixed use, and another was to rezone, uh, what is the southwest Bay Shore area for residential. And the, um, the housing, or when the planning commission started moving forward to implement particularly the southwest Bay Shore, uh, rezoning, if you started looking at the, uh, topographic constraints and access constraints associated with that property that was planned for residential zoning, um, we determined, and the commission, uh, determined that that would be infeasible. And so actually, they went back to the council probably about a year ago and directed or requested the o- opportunity to look at alternative sites, and that was again, an action the council, um, concurred with about a year ago. And then in terms of the southeast Crocker Park mixed use, uh, that did not move forward primarily, um, I know there's a lot of planning efforts with, um, the Crocker Park, um, Technical Assistance Panel and kind of getting an idea of what that report would recommend or suggest for that area. It was felt that that would be a good s- starting off point for any kind of rezoning effort in in Crocker Park. And again, while that's moved forward, it really hasn't, um, that the TAP report hasn't been presented to the full council yet. So again, that that effort has sort of been deferred until such time as the TAP report is is presented and the council chooses to act on some of the recommendations. Cause I think it would have some impact on how the the subsequent rezonings occur. So again, that was the shortfall, the two hundred and ten units. And then the new requirements for our next RENA cycle, or RENA, which is our Regional Housing Needs Allocation, I'll use that terminology throughout, there's eighty-three units for this next upcoming cycle, so. Uh, I think that was a very, um, appropriate adjustment. The four hundred and one unit allocation for the previous cycle was really, um, you know, in the city's opinion, was really unrealistic and quite severe. And I think the eighty-three units is really a number that's a lot more, uh, realistic, given Brisbane's size and capacity to to develop, so. So I think the number really does recommend a a proper adjustment, uh, from the region. Again, this table isn't that useful, but it does show the carryovers and the new, um, RENA numbers for the the current cycle. I guess I really, what you want to take from this primarily is that the shortfall, as you see, is coming primarily in the very low, low and moderate income categories, you know, of our, of the of the of the shortfall, that's two hundred sixty-three of the two hundred ninety-three units comes in those categories, so. So when I say that our planning is really oriented toward accomplishing or accommodating the very low, low and moderate, I think that's kind of gives you an idea of the scale issues we're talking about. And again, when we're talking about those sort of categories of income, the state has some very specific criteria for what they consider a qualifying site to to qualify as low or moderate income. And these are some of the criteria that are established by the state. Do you have to establish a minimum density of twenty units to the acre? You need to have a minimum site area that would allow for a project of sixteen units or more. That at least half of the low mod units be provided in residentially zoned sites, not within a mixed-use, um, project. So again, that's another constraint. And that the zone sites, um, have to allow the densities and the development by right, and not subject to use permit, planned development permit, or or other discretionary design review that might impact density or reduce density, so. So those are, again, state requirements that we're, um, we need to sort of operate within as we as we move forward with our zoning. So looking at those parameters, the the planning commission went through a fairly extensive process of of reviewing the housing element overall, uh, over, you know, I think it was about eight workshops over six months or so, maybe a little over that earlier this year. And a fair amount of the time was spent on on this sort of issue of what the adequate sites would be. And in this graphic, I'm trying to demonstrate where the where the current residential zoning is in town, where the the planning commission considered alternative sites, they considered that you might able to accommodate our additional housing needs. And those are areas shown in blue, you know, the the three that were primarily looked at were, you know, there's some discussion about Sierra Point, and then the VWR site, those were dismissed fairly readily, uh, out of hand, cause there are a number of constraints and, uh, policy decisions that would would make residential, um, maybe inconsistent. So those were dismissed pretty easily. I think the one that was, probably had the most traction or the most discussion was the idea of in the in the proximity of the Village in southeast Crocker where, um, the the required units could be accomplished or best accommodated. And ultimately, it was the commission's recommendation that they be accommodated in two discreet spots. And that would be the two properties on Park Place in a mixed-use format, and then residential only on these three properties on Park Lane. And by designating those at the densities which are specified, the mixed-use at twenty to the acre and the, um, residential at twenty-six to the acre, uh, we can basically accommodate our shortfall on those particular properties. And I think it's important to understand what the context of the housing element is relative to other planning that might occur that involves other properties such as the Village or the Post Office or the one twenty-five Valley property, which were, you know, previously considered for mixed-use. The the by by meeting the housing element obligations on these particular parcels, what that does is provide a little more flexibility for the city for planning of these other remaining parcels, because again, if it's the city's determination that that's going to be more of a mixed-use district or portions of it are going to be mixed-use, and they're parcels that aren't specifically designated to meet our housing element requirements, then those state adopted criteria don't necessarily apply. We don't have to have the minimum density, we don't have to have some of these other criteria. So we really felt it would give the city a little more flexibility in in planning this whole area, um, over time. And should those planning efforts not not ultimately, um, result in any future activity, then we'd still be in a position where we could discreetly rezone these properties in the manner prescribed by state law, allow for their, what we consider a very logical development pattern, and to meet our state obligation. So it both accommodates maybe a larger area planning approach, but it also allows us to meet our needs, you know, on a standalone basis, if that's ultimately the the larger planning decision the city makes. Uh, there are a nu- number of other sort of policy and program changes that were proposed as part of the housing element. A couple relate to that new overlay zoning that's being, uh, created. You know, the the planning commission spent a lot of time with the the concern that, uh, that introducing residential uses into the industrial park not impinge on or otherwise start to, um, detract from the economic viability of the remaining, um, industrial properties within the park. And you know, you can see the the possibility of that kind of erosion if you introduce residential. and, and you get into nuisance issues because a new residential now interfaces with industrial. You know, the concern is that over time, the industrial sort of land uses and ability to, to use the land as now planned and zoned would be compromised. So, so again, the, the commission recognized there needs to be a balance between creating a really appropriate residential environment on those parcels while still protecting the, the remaining industrial base within Crocker Park. And there's policy language that was introduced specifically to make sure that that kind of trade-off and balance issue is, is addressed in, in any subsequent rezonings for the site to create these overlay zones. And also that the, you know, you would take a look, the city would take a look at the, the Crocker Park, excuse me, zoning, um, development standards to again, try to promote compatibility. So, I mean, those would be all efforts of zoning that would be implementation measures following adoption of this housing element. We're not trying to determine what all those issues would be at this particular juncture in adopting the housing element. Those are implementation steps. Secondly, there was an issue of, um, the, the 2007 housing element relied very heavily on form-based code as a vehicle to, um, allow for by-right zoning or to allow residential uses by right in this area while still providing a lot of proactive city direction as to the form of the development, its style, its physical character, other amenities. And the form-based zoning is one tool that's possible to do that, but it's not the only tool. And so what the planning commission did was eliminate the specification of form-based coding as the tool to achieve the city's zoning. Because we believe there are other tools that might be appropriate. And I think the, the real goal is to, is still to, for the city to provide a very proactive vision for how these properties are to be developed and their form and their amenities and other aspects. So a developer understands what those requirements are upfront. And the city's not in reactive mode of having to react to a developer's proposal. So again, it's trying to make sure that is still captured, but without tying us to a particular tool, which may or may not be the best tool for the, for the area. Uh, some other policy and program changes, one relates to secondary dwelling units, which, um, again, there's a, there's quite a gap between what's theoretically possible in terms of units in town that might accommodate a secondary dwelling unit versus our production historically. And the state typically only gives you credit for numbers that are more along your historic production. They're, they're not going to give us credit for a theoretical number of secondary dwelling units that might be, um, created if we have a, you know, a, a history over the last 10 or 12 years of a number that's much lower. And so some of these policies that are discussed in here are really intended to try to, you know, maybe stimulate or allow for a little higher production of secondary dwelling units where appropriate and suitable. Including reducing the, uh, the fees for units that occur strictly within a building envelope because they tend to be a much more simpler review. Explore the possibility for, you know, loan programs potentially to allow for those or to promote them. Working with the ridge to see, uh, amending the northeast ridge permit to allow the conversion of existing floor area to secondary dwelling units. And then lastly, exploring the reduction in lot size minimum for secondary dwelling units on lots. Those are all just again, policy suggestions that would be vetted fully, you know, through the implementation program and the city may choose to do any or none of these as an implementation step. But they're, you know, suggestions at this particular point in time. A couple other, um, components that were considered and are proposed in the housing element. Uh, one is the consideration of adopting, um, housing impact fee or commercial linkage fee. And the basic premise there is that the production of market-rate housing or, um, additional non-residential space create a demand for service sector, uh, jobs and services that, that basically create a demand for low and moderate income housing. You know, if you're going to need service sector jobs that don't pay, um, you know, they pay at a low moderate level, you know, that, that's really the, the, the thought process behind the, the, both of those fees. And the city would collect that and then be able to put that toward, um, toward, um, development of low-mod housing. So again, that's partially an attempt to offset the loss of redevelopment funding for low and moderate income housing. Uh, similar vein, um, there are several housing, um, advocacy groups that are requested in all the jurisdictions within the county to, to devote a portion of the property taxes, additional property tax the city received through the elimination of redevelopment and, and dedicate those specifically for low-mod income housing. Again, that would be a policy decision for the council at some point, often referred to as boomerang funds. And so there was mention made in the housing element for this, the city may want to consider that as well. And then lastly, the city does have inclusionary requirements today, which means that, um, residential projects of a certain size have an obligation to, um, to include a certain percentage of low and moderate income units. Uh, there've been some changes in state law and state laws interpreted through litigation such that our inclusionary requirements and ordinance need to be amended. So again, one of the implementation steps is to amend our, our, um, inclusionary housing requirements to comply with state law. Um, again, the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution and authorize staff to submit the draft housing element to the HCD for review and consideration. Come back to the city council following that, that review. Uh, with that said, I've opened the, uh, the floor to questions. Would point out, uh, preparation of this housing element was a really a, a team effort in the planning department. And have retired planner Toon back for a special visit today. And, uh, senior planner Johnson, who are instrumental in preparing this document. And all three of us will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff, Lori?
Sure. Okay. Thank you for the report. That was really informative and helpful. Um, and I learned a lot reviewing my first housing element draft. And one of the things which I just wanted to emphasize that I, I hadn't realized, maybe it's a misconception among the public as well, that it's not the actual units being built that is what matters. It's the, the zoning is how the, the numbers get met. And so if they get zoned for residential, it gets counted. And then that, if, if it doesn't get zoned, but not, not that it doesn't get built, but it doesn't get zoned, the certain number of properties and that amount gets carried over. So I thought that was a, an important distinction to know. So I had a question about the, the secondary dwelling units. I, you know, I understand how that'll increase, um, the amount of affordable units. But how does that get tracked? Are there permits that are required to open up those types of units in existing homes? And how does that affect the RENA numbers?
Yes, there are permits required through the city. There are also development standards for, you know, in terms of parking and other amenities that need to be provided with secondary dwelling units. So that is a planning permit people apply for. Um, and we can track those. And again, if, if there's more production of those units and then historically, for example, over the period of this housing element cycle, then we could make the case, um, at the next housing element cycle that, that a higher proportion of our, of our housing need could theoretically be met by this particular... Because right now, there's a gap between what's, you know, the number of lots in town that could theoretically accommodate a secondary dwelling unit versus the production of those units. And the production is very small relative to the number of units that are theoretically capable of accommodating them. And the state doesn't give us credit for our theoretical yield. They give us credit for what they consider reasonably foreseeable. And they use past trends as a predictor of future performance. So...
Okay. But the state gives credit only for zoning changes? And there's no zoning change, is there, when, when a secondary dwelling, dwelling unit gets...
There's no zoning change, but the zoning, uh, zoning allows for secondary dwelling units. So that's fundamentally, our zoning allows for secondary units under certain criteria. And, um, but it is the one area where they don't give us credit on a theoretical basis for secondary units.
Right. It would have to be that when, when they come and say, you know, here's how many units we think we're going to require, we would then say, well, we already did create so many through these secondary dwelling units. And it would sort of be a responsive argument is what you're saying.
And then we would say for the next time, well, we, we produced, picking, we pick, we produced 30 over the last housing element cycle. We think that trend will continue and we would suggest that 30 to 50 would be met in the next cycle. So I mean, it's predictive too, because part of what we're doing is, is trying to accommodate for upcoming cycle. But if we're only producing three to five units a year, or three to five over the life of the housing element, and they say, well, we're going to, we think we're going to produce 70 secondary dwelling units in the next 10 years or five years, you know, they'll look at past performance as not being predictive. And they wouldn't give us credit for our claim. So again, that would just push our demand for required sites elsewhere. So that, that's kind of the, the trade-off.
Okay. And so there was this drop now, you know, from, down from 400 something to, to 83 for the, this next cycle. So can you talk about how that happened? You know, what, what were the... Was there a higher figure originally suggested and how did we get it down to 83?
Again, the RENA, for, for those who haven't been involved in this process, is a number that's imposed on the city by, through a regional process. It's not a number the city necessarily has. We certainly have no final say over it. We try to, you know, tug it in the right direction through the regional process, but we really don't have a final say on it. The 2007 number, I think, was based on a different methodology than the, than the current cycle. The, the 2007 methodology was weighted really heavily toward jobs, housing balance in a town or in the community. And Brisbane was perceived as being jobs rich and housing poor. And so we took what I consider a disproportionately high number of housing units to, in the regional perspective, that was to balance out our jobs, housing imbalance. You know, whether or not that's a valid argument or a valid approach, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it is. But you know, it's water under the bridge. That was our number. Uh, for this current cycle, they were orienting development toward PDAs, priority development areas, locations with transit, et cetera, et cetera. And so areas like Brisbane that didn't really have that sort of features were really left with a very, a relatively flat, you know, there, everyone had kind of a baseline growth rate. And that's what we took. And jurisdictions that had PDAs and opportunities for transit-oriented growth took a higher number.
Okay. And did the fact that we had, um, some unmet figure, did that factor in at all to the lower number that we weren't able to fulfill those numbers for the last cycle? Does that play into it?
No, it really doesn't. Um, because I think, in fact, that's why the requirement is for the carryover. I don't think they want to create a, they don't want to create an incentive, a disincentive for, for jurisdictions to perform. Say if we just sort of wipe the slate clean and then we can just forget about those 400 and deal with the 80, that would have been, you know, a little easier for us personally, but, um, that's not what the state is. You know, they want us to carry that burden forward and, and still meet that previous burden. They're not, they're not claiming that that number was bad. You know, that, that number is the number they assigned us and, and, you know, in their mind, we have to live with that number and, and meet it.
And there, there is, you know, if we're on our, if we are unable to meet the, the number as we, as we weren't in the last cycle, then there, there is no penalty. It's just sort of an aspirational goal.
That starts to get, I mean, there's already a penalty in a way of the process that we're going through with our housing element. There's even a much more simplified way of doing this if we had met all our housing numbers.
Okay.
You know, we'd be talking about a very streamlined HCD review and a much more simplified process. So in a sense, we are paying the city through our administrative processes, paying the price. And, and I think down the road, I think it's going to be a little more... This is always evolving and the idea that the state, in the last tying housing to transportation, the sustainability, community strategy, you know, their direction in the future is going to be on housing production as well. So, you know, I, I only foresee the obligations on the city, you know, through housing elements and other sort of requirements to perform only getting more rigorous over time, frankly. That's, that's my guess.
And you talked about it in your presentation, but one of the questions I had, um, asked staff about was, you know, why we hadn't considered the other properties like the post office and, um, the other, the Valley Drive property next, next to the shopping center. And, you know, as it was explained by staff, you know, it doesn't mean we can't zone those for residential, but it, it just constrains us more if we put them in the housing element because then we have to meet all the housing element requirements. So I thought that was, that was good, good information to know. Let's see. And so...
Which, uh, that's an interesting question. I think we need a little more, at least I need a little bit more clarification on what you just said, which evidently you got from staff. So...
Okay.
I would appreciate a little bit more elaboration on what, uh, council member Liu just said.
Yeah, I think there, um, and maybe I might have some assistance from my colleagues because part of this is a numeric exercise. We have to achieve a certain number of units, right? So there are a couple of variables. You know, the area, from all the discussion we had with the planning commission, the area in question was pretty clear, you know, that southeast Crocker was the preferred location. So it got back down to how many parcels would you need to designate? What density would you apply to them? And, um, how you, which configurations, so which parcels and at what density? And what the numbers would end up being? So we looked at, I think, a, a number of different iterations about if you zoned Valley Drive, for example, you know, the 125 Valley right next to the shopping center. You, you could achieve a lot of the same numbers, um, actually more numbers than, than the housing element would require. But then again, if you just did all the Valley Drive and Park Place properties, you'd have to designate some of those just for residential and you wouldn't be able to have mixed-use. So it got to be a very complicated little pattern of, of, um, parcel, the, the parcels. And do you really want to constrain yourself to say that 125 Valley would be mixed-use at 20 units to the acre? But the parcel next door would be residential only at 24 to the acre? It created a, I think, a very unnecessarily complicated and, and confining sort of set of regulations for the city to kind of go through this planning process for this, this larger, you know, edge condition. So what we tried to do is create what we considered very logical units that would meet our needs, that would fit within a larger, uh, context of what the city might want to do with the, you know, the village and the adjacent properties and whatever for future planning. So it was really kind of a judgment call. And, and the fact of the matter is the more you designate, you, you, you impose those density requirements in particular, you really eliminate your flexibility of, of maybe, you know, a lower density makes sense in certain areas. But by putting, uh, the housing element restriction, then we're, then we do have the minimum density. And we didn't really think that was necessarily the best thing to do. And if you want to go through really site-specific numbers, we can do that, you know, as, as an exercise for you. But that, that's kind of the picture. We're trying to not over-regulate all these parcels. Because I think really what I look at this, or what we look at this is the housing element shouldn't necessarily drive the city's planning for that area and the future of the village and those adjacent, you know, that edge condition. It's something that needs to be addressed, that need to be incorporated. But I don't know that you want to let the housing element requirements drive every planning decision that's made out there.
That seems to make sense to me because, you know, say, you know, 125 Valley Drive, what if we decide that we don't want housing there at all? And we just want to expand the commercial and, you know, have that front bay shore and, you know, really make a more robust shopping center by expanding into there and have our residential next to it. That would constrain us if we said that there had to be some form of housing there. So... And then with the post office, uh, site, I had asked the same question and the response was that, sure, we can have residential there, but it's not necessary. You know, we kind of want to do the minimum of what is necessary to put into the housing element so that we're not, um, you know, bound by... you know, bound by the density requirements and whatever requirements there are. So. And on secondary dwelling units, going back to that again. So right now, I had asked what the minimum lot size was and the response I got was that it's five thousand feet. And the proposal in here is that we eliminate that completely. And can you talk, um, John, a little about, you know, why, might I make it zero?
I have to look, I thought the wording was reduce or eliminate, but I.
Is it reduced? Maybe I'm.
You know, the idea was if someone had, you know, I think this was in response to a, a resident who came up and I don't know if their lot was forty-eight hundred square feet or something. And their, their question was, well, if I can meet all the development standards for a secondary unit, which there are for parking and size and all these other things, why shouldn't I be eligible to establish a secondary unit on my property? And so, you know, the commission thought it was worth investigating, you know, as part of a, as a policy or a program, you know, as an implementation step.
But they could probably only do that if the acreage was pretty close.
That's, that's true because again, you, the, with the development standards, you need, they still have to comply with the development standards for a secondary unit, so. So I mean, reduce, maybe, maybe eliminate, you know, if you're, probably isn't a, a needed. I don't think we'd ever eliminate the standard, you know, you may reduce the, the minimum lot size for that.
Okay, but there's still requirements for, you know, say, that size of bedrooms or other structures.
Sizes and parking, parking being the, the primary driver.
That's something that we're gonna still be looking at, in the process of looking at that.
To, to piggyback on that, currently if someone has, let's say, a forty-eight hundred square foot lot and so doesn't meet the minimum five thousand, they can still apply to the planning commission to, um, have a secondary unit through exemption or through a var- variance. Is that correct?
That is actually not a variance item. You can't, it's not a development standard, it's a density question. So you cannot get a variance to that minimum lot size requirement.
Okay. And, um, okay. Thank you.
And these, um, housing impact fees, would those only be applied to new development and would they include secondary dwelling units or just new construction?
We wouldn't, we'd only apply it to market rate, uh, new, new residential construction.
Okay.
Secondary units are.
A developer that, that pays that, that fee.
Or if someone, you know, had an infill lot and wanted to build a single family residence, yes, that would be.
Okay. Okay. And then with the, um, affordable housing overlay, you mentioned that, um, the planning commission recommended in, including some language in the policy about having a balance, um, based on some concerns raised by the property owners, the commercial property owners about balancing the, you know, the viability of the commercial businesses with the residential being right, right next door. Can you talk about what kinds of things would be done to make sure that those types of uses could coexist? You know, for instance, you know, traffic issues, no, uh, noise, um, carbon emissions.
I think a couple of things. One is, you know, the park lane corridor is certainly not subject to the same kind of traffic volumes and heavy truck volumes that Valley is. So we, we think they'll actually be, well, they'll be reduced from it would be on Valley or Bay Shore certainly, so that area is a little less impacted. But, um, even then, the BA QMD, as part of their last, um, SEQA guidelines update, you know, part of this whole trend toward TOD development, which tends to involve multifamily along some fairly, um, heavily congested corridors, what they carry a lot of truck traffic and vehicular traffic. They've come up with a number of sort of methods to, to minimize the impacts of, um, there are, increase the compatibility, I guess, between residential and these kind of, um, emission and noise producers. Uh, things like certain kind of ventilation system, exhaust systems, even site design, how you do screenings. So private areas, you know, private open spaces are not exposed to, you know, the street and truck traffic. They actually recommend certain types of vegetation that have a sort of a partic- uh, particulate cleansing, um, sort of characteristics. So there are a number of, of methodologies that BA QMD recommends. And I would suspect that as a part of that overlay, we would want to sort of go through that palette and that menu and, and try to incorporate what we think makes sense for, for that residential zone. And then the other part would be to look at, um, the, the standards for Crocker. And, you know, are there certain activities that, that we feel need to be looked at more closely in proximity to residential? So that would be the other side of the equation. The balance is also to try to make sure that the new, or the current industrial is a good neighbor to a future residential. It's the other side.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, here, I guess the difference is that we're, you know, there's already existing commercial businesses and we're thinking about putting residential into it. So it's, it's not just starting from scratch where, you know, there's some mixed use developments that have residential on, you know, the top, you know, couple floors and, and a business down below. So, you know, it, it sounds very interesting how, you know, we'll have to come to that in the future about how to adapt both uses. And then I did have some minor edits, like just typographical things which I sent on to staff, so I'm hoping those will be incorporated. And that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Ray, do you have any questions for staff?
There's not a public hearing officially, right? So I just wanted to make one statement that doesn't quite fit in the normal order of things. I just happen to think that this state micromanaging of this area is totally dysfunctional. I'd be willing to bet that over the entire state, um, particularly for cities under twenty thousand. It doesn't create any affordable housing for low income people at all. It's just a whole lot of paperwork, busyness and keep the staff occupied when they ought to be doing other things. There are so many other things that need to be done because, you know, what people don't have is income and we don't really have builders who are gonna build those things. All these kind of policies are not gonna create a hill of beans. So I just think it's a, a huge waste of time for all of us, but we are forced into it by the state who's not willing to live up to its responsibilities. Sorry, I just had to get that off my chest. I was looking through all this stuff and, oh God, you know, none of this is gonna work, you know, I mean, it's crazy. Uh, but anyway. I had a couple of, uh, questions, um, that I just wanted to ask our staff. I was looking at page five-two. What is one sixty-three visitation avenue? Isn't that the LT Clark property?
That's the old five star cafe that the city owns.
Okay, that's LT Clark to me, yeah. Okay. Anyway, it says here that these properties are now owned by the Brisbane Housing Authority, which I think is out of date. I think that property is now owned by the city. Am I right about that?
My understanding was that the redevelopment properties were turned over to the housing authority.
Yes, but then, but then we, we came up to the ten year limit. We could keep it in that category and so the only thing we could do was for the city to buy it. So the city actually owns that property now.
Uh, I'll correct that.
Then in the, this whole sec- next section on density bonus. You know, I haven't heard really much about this and we're talking about adopting some kind of amendment that we haven't really had a policy discussion about. I was wondering if you'd address what this is all about.
What page is that on?
This is, uh, five-two.
The city is required to adopt a density bonus ordinance in compliance with state law. And we did that on the previous housing, um, element cycle. State law then also allows the city to go beyond the minimum state requirements to either allow a greater bonus for projects that propose to provide more affordable housing than the minimum required by the state. And you can also go the other direction and allow density bonuses for projects that provide less than the minimum required by the state. Um, as long as those bonuses are no more than what the state would allow for something that was actually meeting its requirements. So, um, the particular program that's proposed in this housing element was actually also proposed in the previous one, but we didn't get that far with implementation. Uh, it would allow the city to consider those greater options than what's required under state law to encourage affordable housing beyond the minimum requirements of state.
But we really haven't had a discussion about, you know, what that would be and what the implications would be and lots and so forth.
We have got, we have not gone into detail. We've had the discussions about the concept.
Right.
Um, with the previous housing element. Um, but we, we haven't actually gone to the level of proposing specific numbers.
Okay. So again, this is kind of, you know, hey, we might consider this kind of thing and you're gonna give us credit for it. It's kind of a little check. Okay. I have a question on, um, I guess this is, uh, six-eleven. Policy HB nine. This has to do with, uh, it's something you mentioned, I think, too, uh, Mr. Suwicky about, um, basically, uh, tax increment being put into affordable housing. And so one, a lot of the things that are in here bother me because they, despite what you said about we shouldn't let the housing element determine our planning, I, I think there, there is a great danger that it will anyway. And, and one of the things that we're looking at on the Baylands is how in the world to, you know, with no redevelopment anymore, how are we gonna finance all the infrastructure? And if we put it all into low and moderate housing, which would be wonderful, then there's no way we're gonna finance the infrastructure. And then there's not gonna be no development to get the tax income and that up. So the whole thing doesn't make any sense to me. So what do you think?
Well, as you're right, I mean, the, the housing element includes a number of, whether sort of higher order policy. It's either, there can be suggestions, recommendations, but ultimately these kind of decisions lie to the city council. And, you know, the, the problem this housing element recognizes is that there was a dedicated funding source for low and mod housing that has been eliminated. So, you know, certainly concur that, you know, whether or not this should be the city's obligation or not is probably a whole nother story. But, you know, part of what we're trying to demonstrate to the state in this document and what we present to them is that the city is doing its best to try to backfill and, and financially support, um, uh, low and moderate income housing. And, and, and so we've identified a couple of measures that would provide some alternative funding. You know, again, if, if it's something you're not comfortable with recommending, you should strike it at this point and you don't want to include it as a proposed policy. That's, that's your dis- that's at your discretion. If you want to leave it in here and at some point it comes forward to you and you decide not to actually do such a thing, that's your discretion at that point. Because all it says is consider doing these things. Nothing in this element would ever bind you to, to, especially these kind of programs and policies that don't have a state. You know, certain things like the sites, yes, there's a state obligation to rezone, but these kind of policies are ultimately your call.
Okay. One more of these, uh, kind of mid-level policy things and that's the, this is on six-nineteen. And I have a question. This has to deal with the program, it says, work with responsible agencies to protect identified environmentally sensitive areas, including but not limited to wetlands, riparian habitat, critical wildlife habitat, geologically hazardous areas, areas subject to flooding, visually prominent or sensitive areas and electric transmission line corridors. My question is, um, why is there no reference to toxic contaminated land?
Two housing elements ago, if you want to add toxic contaminated land, that's again, your, your prerogative.
I mean, that seems like a pretty big issue for Brisbane and not even have it referenced. Maybe this isn't the appropriate place for it, but it seems to me it ought to be someplace and I didn't find it anywhere. As a, as a thing to take into consideration.
I, I don't want to use a broad brush here, um, but I think too, keep in mind that in previous housing elements, we wanted to make it clear to the state that there was no intention for housing to go on the Baylands. So that might have been one of the reasons why we didn't consider adding it to the list, was that no one was planning on housing on the Baylands. There are other areas of toxic contamination in Crocker Park.
Not the only place, yeah.
But I believe that those are generally mitigatable, um, to accommodate housing. So that might have been the explanation as to why it wasn't thought of previously. But certainly you could add it. There's no problem with that.
Okay. Okay, so those are the, it's kind of the questions that sort of popped in mind, uh, as I was reading through, which are kind of the mid-level questions. I have a number of higher level policy concerns that, um, I think we should wait until everyone asks their questions and members of the public have their say. Then I'll come back to those, if I may.
Thank you. So, uh, thank you, John. So Tim, you, you touched upon this and so, um, so back in, I thought it was two thousand and ten, but I guess it was two thousand and eleven. The council adopted the two thousand and seven through fourteen, uh, RENA housing allocation. And we had proposed some sites and it was just proposing some of the sites, um, across the street and then down on, on Bay Shore. And then what we have in front of us tonight is kind of the same situation where we're, uh, identifying where we could build these units and we're proposing that in these areas, in, in the industrial park, um, where we could accommodate that. But that's all that we're doing. We're, we're saying that, okay, we can meet your numbers and here's where we're proposing putting the units. And, and that justify, or that, um, uh, that covers what the state requirements, uh, that are, that they're asking from us, correct? All right. Okay. And then, um, let's see, on page three. Okay, you guys talked about the, the, the minimum density for the twenty units, uh, per acre. And so that qualifies for being affordable. Now, it's, it, the state is saying that's affordable because of the size. Those units don't have any restrictions in regards to what the cost would be. Those, they would be market rate, but because they're, they would be smaller, they would then technically or in theory become affordable. That, that is correct. Okay. And then also on page three, so you talked about the at least fifty percent of the lower income housing needs to be just residential. And, um, so because of that requirement, that then brought in the reason to look at the other, um, uh, sites along Park to be residential. Okay. And then, so, um, we've, we've purchased some sites using the former RDA affordable housing money. So the Lau property and the Five Star Cafe. Now the, the Five Star Cafe site, of course, is, is owned by the city, not, not by, yeah, uh, the housing. the housing, the Affordable Housing Authority, but the Lau property is. So where, where did, where do those particular properties come into the mix in, in regards to our allocation?
If you look at table thirty-five, which was the second to the last page of your packet, I believe.
Of the staff report?
Yes, yes, sorry, the staff report. Uh, there's a section which shows the current zoning. Um, and there's a section in yellow called current zoning totals. And there's a unit total of a hundred and sixty-one. Has anybody found that?
Is table, you said table thirty-five?
Yeah.
Page four.
Okay.
The yellow highlighted.
All right.
Yeah. So right above that, that total of a hundred and sixty-one, there's twenty-one units identified for RBA Brisbane Housing Authority site. That would be the Lau property.
Okay.
And then I believe the, the Five Star were captured up in, in CRO two, up above in that table. Four units. They just weren't identified as housing authority sites, which sounds like that would've been inaccurate anyway, so.
Okay, so that's where those, uh, those units are being shown. All right, thanks.
Um, clarification on that. You said it's where it says the, um, Brisbane Housing Authority site. That's where it says twenty-one, one sixty-one's the total, correct?
Correct, yes.
So the, the Lau property is twenty-one units.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. And then on, um, on page seven, in regards to, um, you know, waiving the administrative costs for the second, um, second, uh, secondary dwelling units, what, what kind of, um, cost approximately are, are we looking at as far as waiving?
Staff tells me that's a fee that runs about five to seven hundred dollars. So, you know, I wouldn't think we'd ever eliminate it because there's always going to be some cost of time, but, you know, maybe we could reduce it by fifty percent if it's a, I think that's a much simpler, uh, and level of analysis required and, uh, so we'd be looking at something of that order. But again, that would have to be subject to, again, separate city approval as part of our fee ordinance, so.
Okay. And then, um, going back to page three, the last bullet point, where the sites must be zoned to permit owner occupied and rental multifamily residential use by right. And so, um, you know, the by right thing is, you know, is scary, right? Cause then you're saying that, uh, okay, you, you, you have to have these units and okay, if you want to get the minimum density, you're giving up some rights. And so later on in the staff report, you talk about, um, the overlay zoning implementation. So, um, you know, we've talked about the form-based codes in the past. Um, you have some, some other versions here, like precise plans or maybe a blend of form-based codes and precise plans. Can you talk a little bit more about that and how that can provide some assurance for the community that if something is built, it's built more in, uh, you know, being compatible with the rest of the community?
Yeah, this, precise plan is, um, you look at it almost like a tool that can be, um, like, um, it can have the same sort of breadth of coverage as a specific plan. You get to the point of, you know, determining setbacks, determining building heights, determining building form, building pattern, you know, do you want buildings with, up to the street or do you want them set back? Do you want the parking behind buildings? All those can be specified as design components of a precise plan. And sometimes they're just a little easier to both explain and graphically illustrate in that form as opposed to a, a zoning code book. So, I mean, that's part of it, it just becomes a matter of what is the, what is the right tool? I mean, the idea that the city needs to create the vision and the layout, what the form of those future developments need to be is absolutely the case. So it's just a matter of what is the right tool to do that. Precise plans work well when you have a discrete numbers of properties that are being addressed. And so that's, you know, a tool that seems like it could be quite effective in this area, but again, if this housing element gets adopted in this form, then, you know, we really have to roll up our sleeves and, and figure out the implementation steps.
Okay, all right. So, um, with that, there are these safeguards that we could put in place, um, still allowing the, uh, the minimum density to occur, um, so that the, you know, the right thing that, that's mentioned here, by right, i- is not necessarily so. There, there are some tools at our disposal where we can, um, determine how things will appear once they are built.
Yeah, I think the by right relates to the, the density. Cause you can't, you can't say, well, as part of a design permit, well, it's too crowded, so we're going to reduce your yield by six units. You know, that's, it's going to be, this is the form it's going to take, but, you know, the minimum density is what's going to be kind of the, the un, that's the part that the property owner's going to have to be able to rely upon.
Okay. And John, can you talk about, um, the statewide litigation as it relates to the inclusionary housing ordinances that, that we have passed and a lot of cities have passed? And so what, what's up with that?
There was a, and I don't know if the city attorney wants to weigh in on this, it's called the Palmer decision. And the, the short answer is that it cast a doubt whether the city could impose inclusionary requirements of rental properties and rental projects, where there's not a city sort of contribution or financial stake or financial interest in the project. That's kind of the short answer.
Thank you. So the Palmer decision impacts, um, part of the zoning ordinance and that's a piece that will get amended to, to, um, be consistent with the general plan later on.
Mm-hmm.
And there is a piece of the current zoning ordinance that the Palmer decision says is no longer enforceable as it currently stands. And it's sitting on the books as it sits on the books in many, many other cities across the state. But it currently is not enforceable, um, if there were a current development project going on. But, um, it, it doesn't do any harm sitting on the books. Um, there are ways it could become enforceable, but they would be some hoops that the city would have to go through. And so those can be issues that the city looks at going forward. Um, it is my understanding from planning staff that the county is doing a study and there is a possibility that study could support the ordinance the way we have it, depending on how that study is done, um, and we would have to take a look at that. So, um, the Palmer decision impacts the enforceability of a piece of the zoning ordinance and could impact how the state would look at, um, the zoning requirements in order to meet, um, the qualifications that we're currently addressing. But it, it doesn't directly impact what you're doing here, other than how the state might count the dwellings to determine whether you've met your figures.
Sure. Okay, so then, just to kind of make it simple, if there was, say, one San Bruno. So if that project was before the planning commission right now and they wanted to build their fifteen units, um, based on that decision, we, we, they, we, they still would be required to build the affordable housing unit?
My understanding is that the Palmer decision only impacted rental units?
Yes.
Okay.
And San Bruno, for example, was a for sale.
Okay.
So that, that is correct. Palmer talks about the, um, what it doesn't allow is to put a condition on building, um, the low income in with rental units. It doesn't affect-
Rental units and not ownership.
-a building that is, um, based on ownership. Um, and again, that's sort of a general rule. There are some exceptions. Um, if the city is kicking some money in and, and there's a contract with the developer, you can get around Palmer. Um, and there are some other ways, but the general rule is you can, Palmer changed the way that municipalities can act in, with regard to properties that are being developed for as rentals.
Rental.
Um, but not that are straight up ownership.
Okay.
Is that a Supreme Court decision or lower level?
You know, the Palmer decision is, um, I think it's a California Supreme Court decision, but I can double check that.
It is a Supreme Court decision.
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, and, and so that, I guess, uh, you know, another question I have is, you know, how, you know, what steps can we take to ensure that, you know, some of the units that are going to be affordable are for rent rather than, than just for ownership?
As, as a policy matter, I think John can probably address that better.
Yeah, I mean, uh-
Okay.
John, sorry, Teresa, looking at you.
Well, there's really nothing, I mean, in our zoning regulations that require rental, new projects to be rental. I mean, the only thing we, we are able to regulate is conversion, you know, to make sure that our existing rental stock is preserved. But in terms of, um, future projects, um, no, there's no specific zoning requirements that something be, uh, for rent only. Um, you know, certainly when you had a redevelopment agency and the city was financially contributing to projects, you know, that ability to sort of shape and fund certain product types, you had a lot more flexibility with that, so. In terms of a private development, that's not, you know, requiring any public subsidy or any public contribution, it's, it's, it's a very difficult, and I'm not aware of any planning or legal sort of mechanism where the city could require that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I have just a couple of questions that are for staff. I have quite a few personal opinions, but we'll save those for the next phase. Um, so John, you said that we have a, an, an average of sixty days, um, that the state has to review this document to bring it back to say whether they feel it's adequate and meets their specifications. And, and the, if we were to approve this tonight, the sixty days would put us to the mid, mid-December. And what day is this report due? What's the drop date on this being submitted to the state as complete and approved?
The, the criteria, the deadline is adoption by the city, not anything going back to the state. So we'd be talking about having it adopted by January thirty-first of next year. That's the deadline. And the sixty days is actually a maximum statutory. By, by statute, the state has a maximum of sixty days to review and respond back to us, not-
Okay.
-not an average, so.
And you said for the last, um, housing element season, uh, period, that it was, we were still within, um, our extensions because the state had changed that date by several years. Um, are we expecting that date to be extended during this season or, or, um, period?
I've heard, I've heard nothing about extensions being considered or proposed.
Okay. And so that, that drop, the, the date that it's required to be submitted or approved by, by, um, the council is January thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. And is that the date that we would then be subject to the four-year reporting period if we did not meet unless an extension was made?
That's real, I mean, I, I guess the question is if we were between a first and second reading and, you know, the city had, had approved it but not adopted it, would, would we get hung up because it took us two more weeks to, to actually adopt it? I don't, I don't know that the state is going to draw that hard a line on us. So, you know, there may be some wiggle room in terms of a second reading. You know, you, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that because we hadn't had a second reading by that particular date that we're automatically on the hook, uh, for a four-year review.
But if we made a, any significant changes to this, then it would need to go back to the state again for another review. Um, is that correct?
You mean if you, we submit it in whatever form you authorize it to be submitted and then in the next round of public hearings you make significant changes?
Yes.
Yes, we would want to re-review those with HCD. And again, that becomes sort of a case by case. You know, if we do this and we're in a very active process with them, are they going, again, going to hold us to a specific date? I don't want to speculate on that. Historically, they've been, you know, if, if we're working toward that, seeing you have a unique situation like that, they're typically, you know, my, historically in other housing elements, they were willing to work with you on that. But again, I'm not, you know, these are a different set of rules and, and I don't know that anybody's asked them the question frankly. I haven't asked them the question at this point.
Okay. Um, but usually working in good faith towards the end goal, um, would probably not put us into that penalty period immediately. Chances are. Um, and then you, in this document, it, um, has more units by ninety-eight of surplus units that we are, um, allowing for. Can you speak to that?
I'll, I'll speak to that. So the, the units is, are really driven by the low and very low as well as moderate income. And, and so what we've, what we have in surplus is largely due to existing zoning. So what we're, what we've zoned for, or not zoned for yet, but proposed here is to, um, have the overlay districts to just come up, um, and see if I can find the number here. It's three units over those, uh, very low to moderate income categories. So it's, it's actually quite snug in terms of the numbers. It's the, uh, the, uh, market rate that, that really doesn't drive the numbers is where we're way over.
And how does the effect of, of mixed use affect the density or the availability of other units and low and ultra-low units being able to be built on the site if we were to not have the mixed use in the overlay?
Could, um, could you repeat the question? I'm, I'm not sure what you're getting at.
I know that we can't have all of our units built in a mixed use area and I'm trying to get at why we would have a mixed use rather than all residential. Um, is that to try to achieve low numbers or is that to make it more attractive?
I think that was intended more of a planning issue, is that they're an area that made sense for mixed use and maybe an area that would made more sense for standalone residential? So that was really more of a planning decision. You could, you could achieve everything by just doing residential only zoning. Uh, that would be the case. But if you wanted to add mixed use to that, then again, we'd get back to what the numbers, cause that would be fine from a planning standpoint, but then we'd have to make sure the numbers matched up, right?
But wouldn't having that one level, you know, normally mixed use is, you know, one level of retail with a couple stacked apartment levels or, you know, however many you want to go up? Wouldn't that add more low housing if that were not in that zone?
I think the density is, is kind of an independent issue. You can get, achieve a certain density, cause that's really what's driving it, is the number of units per acre. And you can do that in a, you know, two stories above commercial or you can do it as a standalone, um, project with residential. So I think it's the, it's really the density. Could you achieve more density in a mixed use? Maybe, cause maybe it's a different product type, it's smaller units or studios or, cause of a different lifestyle potentially. But I think that's more, it's still a density question, that's what the state's interested in. You know, you could say, you know, it might be that you could comfortably accommodate thirty to the acre in a mixed-use format versus a smaller number.
I'm trying to go the other direction and say that if we didn't have mixed use, we could probably go twenty to the acre. Because we're setting minimums, not maximums. The minimums are what are important to the driving factor for these numbers, which is the driving factor for this whole pile of paper that we have. Is to get the numbers that the state will agree we are attempting to zone for how probability of housing. Not that we're trying to zone for the probability of businesses. So I'm wondering if we could change the ratio of low to moderate by reducing the amount of mixed use? And just planning for the actual housing units that we're required to plan for?
I'll, I'll let Ken jump in, but if I'm getting this wrong, but right now what we're proposing is the, on the mixed use is the minimum, the, the minimum, minimum density, twenty units to the acre.
Right.
So if we propose any lower density, we won't get credit for any of it as low mod, even if it's in a residential, strictly a residential format.
But we could still leave it as twenty units per acre without that? And it would be more likely a shorter, smaller, less footprint development because you wouldn't be having to allot for the hundred, hundred thousand square feet of
Mixed use.
Mixed use.
The ground floor. Yeah, I think that becomes a planning decision for, for the council. If you want to restrict that parcel or those parcels to a, you know, residential only, that, you know, that's your call. You'll achieve the numbers. That's absolutely the case.
Okay. And, and I think that's something that when we get to discussion, we can talk about. The other question I had for staff was you had mentioned changing the lot size. And, and that it may encourage some secondary dwelling sizes. And how many, in the last RENA housing cycle, how many secondary units got built in Brisbane?
So we, we have on average one a year. That's, that we've included essentially in that. You see with the table thirty-five is we're claiming credit for seven units. It's a seven-year cycle, which translates to one per year. So that's the, the past trend.
And, and typically you would expect the, the secondary units to be smaller, more affordable units, but I see none of them are listed in the low or very low. They're all listed in moderate?
Actually, if you go to the second chapter of the housing element, there's a long discussion about how affordable secondary dwelling units actually are. Conservatively, though, we've included them in the category of moderate income because we have no way of restricting the rents on those second units. And the state in the past in reviewing the housing element had indicated that they were not going to give credit for these second units as being low or very low. So that's an ongoing discussion that we've had with the state over how to characterize these units. But we've taken a conservative position in this housing element.
Okay. And that conservative position, when it came back to, you know, waiving the fee for secondary units of five or seven hundred dollars to, you know, go through the planning process for a secondary unit. If those are for moderate housing, why would we be waiving a fee that is so low that costs us that much to, or even contemplating waiving a fee that is, you know, three months of our water bill or equal to?
I actually believe. This is probably something that we should discuss further with the city attorney, but if the city were to waive a permit fee, that might be a financial contribution. And we might have some leverage to then impose some kind of rent control. I, I think that was in an earlier version of policy, excuse me, program HB one E, that laundry list of potential secondary unit programs.
But, but if, if it's a five hundred dollar fee, how likely would it be that a, a person who's willing to build a secondary unit, if they're planning not for a personal use, to guarantee that they're going to charge below market rate rent?
But this is actually the case, that a good number of these are for personal use.
Right.
So they may not have that concern. For example, secondary units are designed for the occupant, the owner, to occupy and then rent out the rest of the house. So in such a case as that, they might have no problem with agreeing to future rent restrictions to get that fee waived upfront. So it's, it's a possibility.
Well, in, in the past, it has seemed that, you know, smallness is one of the ways to make it affordable. But that's certainly not the case in today's market necessarily. And then I had some questions about the possibility of changing the plan development permits up at the landmark at the ridge for making them into multifamily home, subdividing homes?
I guess what, what was suggested was to impose the same, or, I would say impose or allow them to do the same things that other residences in, in Brisbane can do in the village or in central Brisbane, which is to establish a secondary unit in the existing footprint of a home, assuming they meet all the same development standards. That would be the intent.
Okay. That's the only questions I had for staff.
I can interrupt for one second to jump back earlier. Councilmember Miller asked about the Palmer case, and that is actually a California Court of Appeal decision. It's not a decision of the California Supreme Court. But the Supreme Court did deny rehearing.
Say that again, the last sentence?
The, the California Supreme Court denied rehearing. In other words, the parties requested that the California Supreme Court take the case up from the Court of Appeal. And the, the Supreme Court denied rehearing. So this is a Court of Appeal decision. It is good law in California, but it is not a decision of the California Supreme Court.
Okay, great.
I wanted to correct my earlier statement.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I understand this is not a public hearing, but I do have a slip for the public to speak, and unless there's an objection, I would like to open it up to public comment. So I have a slip for Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I think this is my third round of RENA negotiations with the city of Brisbane, and it still pisses me off every time it gets crammed down our throats by the state of California. But I have a lot of problems with this proposal, and I'm just going to tell you what they all are. First of all, I'm leery about submitting this to the state as it is, unless we have it buttoned down the way we want it to be. Because what we submit is what they're going to then expect us to approve, and I have a lot of problems with what's here. I really curious about what they consider to be low and moderate income for us, because San Mateo County is the second highest median income county in the state of California, second only to Marin. So when they call, when they talk about low and moderate income housing, I'm, I'm assuming that's countywide, not statewide and that type of thing. I'm a little concerned about converting Crocker Industrial Park to a residential. It's a slippery slope and the next thing you know, we're a complete bedroom community after fighting so hard to get Crocker Industrial Park as an industrial park in the sphere of influence in the city of Brisbane. I mean, we basically traded the mountain, the northeast ridge, for Crocker Industrial Park, under threat of the county. So I really have a hard time taking that and converting it to, you look at me like you don't understand what I'm talking about, Lori.
I do.
Okay, but when we made the agreement with the county to allow the northeast ridge development, it was because the county threatened to take the whole thing and give it to Daly City, including Crocker Industrial Park. And that's part of the reason the great compromise was made to allow development at the northeast ridge, so that Brisbane, it became part of Brisbane and not Daly City. And it was all about Crocker Industrial Park and the revenue that generates for the city of Brisbane. So I have a hard time converting that to housing as the state crams it down our throats. And there are a lot of concerns over that because of mixed use and the problems we have with lighting and traffic and, and, you know, people in housing areas breathing more and more diesel fumes because it is an industrial area. We've had a lot of conflicts already with the industry in Crocker Industrial Park and the development at the northeast ridge. The development in northeast ridge is a whole other problem for me. I absolutely am opposed to us allowing secondary units in the houses at Landmark at the Ridge. That was originally supposed to be condominiums. The city made an agreement that they would reduce the number of units from four hundred and ninety-two units down to five hundred, condominium units, down to five hundred and seventy-one or something like that. Single-family residences, and that is what they are now, with very large footprints that is almost equal to the amount of space that the original condominiums would have taken up. And it has really a lot of implications environmentally for the mountain. It is a sensitive area. It's part of the HCP. And I strongly object to any changes in that agreement. It needs to be enforced. Without, we didn't, we, the Brisbane City Council voted to accept that agreement, said that they would stand by it, agreed not to do a new environmental impact review on the addendum of, of the northeast ridge for building out the rest of the seventy-one homes in endangered habitat. I do not think that we should open the door to double the density in that area by allowing secondary units in these huge four thousand square foot homes that we have allowed to be built there. I think they need to stand as they are. They have CCNRs that already aren't being enforced the way they should, and that is of great concern. It's part of the Habitat Conservation Plan area. How would you handle the assessment on secondary units in terms of funding the HCP? Brings up a lot of questions. The council promised to uphold the development agreement, and I don't consider opening it to secondary units upholding the development agreement. I consider that very wrong. It's an environmentally sensitive area. It would include other problems like additional parking, water, traffic, sewer. Is the current water tank have the capacity to double the amount of residents in that area? I doubt it. And I feel that that's the same with the mega mansions that have already been built and are planned to be built in the Brisbane Acres and some of the other sensitive habitat interface areas, such as San Diego Court, some of the paths for Amos Road and Harris, whatever, out that way. I don't feel that, I feel it's a, it's a perversion of the acres ordinances for low-density housing on the Brisbane Acres to build a five thousand square foot home and then subdivide it into, you know, secondary units after the fact. I think that's wrong. I think that's totally wrong. And there again, you have the same problems of density in sensitive habitat areas and is directly in contrary to what we've been trying to achieve here in Brisbane with preserving the mountain and preserving the open space and the conservation areas. I think that in regular Brisbane, if I buy a home in an area that's zoned for R1 and a single-family dwelling with minimum lot sizes, am I going to be happy if the property next door is suddenly, you know, two units, more traffic, more cars, more people, more density, less open space? Even within the same footprint, it creates a parking problem. It creates a density difference. So I think you need to tread lightly there as well. And you are opening the doors to basically a lot of much more dense population and dense housing and dense, denseness in central Brisbane. Created quite a problem last housing, um, process we went through when we changed the density in the R2 zone on San Bruno Avenue and said people had to have a density equal to twenty acre, twenty units per acre. And that meant that people like my brother couldn't remodel his house, couldn't add a bedroom, couldn't do anything to his house without incurring having to go up to a density level of twenty units per acre. Well, when people really understood what the council had voted for, they were up in arms and they came in and they had to change that. So I'd be very careful about, about that. I think that one of the other problems we have there is that it really reduces the quality of life because some people are always going to want exceptions. They're going to want two units on a forty-eight hundred square foot lot. And then they're going to want two units on a three thousand square foot lot, and then they're going to want two units on a twenty-five foot wide lot. And the next thing you know, they're going to be asking for variances on lot lines and encroachment, and it just gets more and more dense as time goes on. And we lose the character of what Brisbane is, which is the ability to be able to breathe and have, you know, animals and plants and, and the environment, you know, we have an obligation to protect. I'm concerned about the height of the buildings that are being planned for Crocker Industrial Park. Height of buildings changes the environment. We are, the whole Crocker Industrial Park is a sensitive habitat in the middle of a greater sensitive habitat. It is a watershed. It, it is a very important vital area. It is surrounded by endangered species habitat. And it's, I've said this numerous times, it's not about a butterfly or a frog. It's about the quality of our entire life and the living environment that we support. When you build buildings that are three and four-story hot, high, there are a lot of animals and insects and birds that cannot now transverse the area that they used to be able to do that. So one of the reasons why Clippy, why Ice House Hill no longer has the Clippy, because the development on the northeast ridge and the development of that industrial park at North Hill, that area there, the buildings just are too tall, the trees are too tall. They've created an impediment for the butterflies to come back across to Clippy Hill. And now Ice House Hill is, is barren. It still has habitat, but there's, there's no Clippy there anymore. And, and basically that's what you're talking about doing when you build three-story and higher structures in Crocker Industrial Park. And so I think that that's also a slippery slope. I've been concerned about the water for the area. I am very concerned about giving a plan to the state that lists us as being willing, able to build three hundred and ninety-one units when we're only having two hundred and ninety-three crammed down our throats. Because sure enough, when we go into the next cycle, they'll say, well, you didn't do all three hundred and ninety-one units, so you still owe us another three hundred units from that cycle, and let's just add it to, you know. I'm sorry, I don't, I think that's a really bad idea, because it means that we're open to building that number of units just to achieve our low and moderate income housing, as Terry said. And if I understood what was said correctly earlier, you cannot use units in a mixed-use facility as low-income housing. So in other words, any units in a mixed commercial facility. Am I correct? No? That's what I thought I heard, that those cannot account, you know.
Only fifty, you can only get credit for fifty percent.
For fifty percent, yeah. And I think it's a shame. I agreed with what Ray said about how the state just continues to cram this down our throats without thought or consideration to what's really needed. Because most people who qualify for, to per, would qualify to purchase low-income housing or moderate-income housing would not be able to afford to purchase low-income housing or moderate-income housing. And so it does not serve by any means the population that needs to be served. And what we really do need is low-income rental units that are not Geneva Towers and not the projects. And so I find this whole process just to be a bastardization of a good idea gone way bad in the state of California. And when we succumb to it and not fight against it, um, we are allowing it to happen. And I expect better of Brisbane than to allow this to happen. And I seriously, seriously object to us allowing secondary units in either Landmark at the Ridge or the Brisbane Acres when people have already done density transfers, et cetera, to keep that as a low-density, sensitive habitat area, and especially with the planned development at the northeast ridge. I'm sorry, that perverts every agreement that this council or the previous council, the city council, the city of Brisbane made. And it disgusts me that they would even consider that. It's already bad enough that we do not uphold the CCNRs and the agreements in the development that were made. So, thank you.
Thank you. So would anyone else of the public like to speak on this? So we can close the public discussion?
Well, there's.
Not really a public hearing, so just conversation.
Now, council discussion.
Well, I have a, like you said, you have opinions, and I've already expressed my frustration at this whole dysfunctional process. I guess the 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 personal problem that I have is um I really haven't been a part of this entire, I don't know, seven or eight years of consideration of how to deal with this mess that the state and the local, regional keep imposing upon us. And also, of course, the the economic realities that, in my opinion, this doesn't address at all. And so I feel not really connected to the decisions that have been made and why they've been made and, you know, what we should do. And 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 so I I I just don't feel ready to, you know, to take any action. And uh I I guess I feel very uncomfortable putting something forward that even though I know um it's just for the state to review, it it does really communicate to them that we have in mind actually doing some of these things. Or that we have, you know, kind of approved these things as something that, you know, we really are behind. And I'm not so sure, mostly because I just haven't been a part of this process, uh, that I'm really comfortable with all of this. Uh, and so I guess the first thing I want to say is uh, I just need some more time to to digest all of this. I mean, the amount of paperwork that we were supposed to digest in a week, and the planning commission has spent two years on it, plus all the previous stuff. You know, it was just more than I can digest. I mean, I looked at it, but I just haven't been able to digest it. It's just way too much to to take in. And and I had just all kinds of questions of why did we pick that property rather than this property? And, you know, we can't go through all of that tonight, you know, but um, I guess, kind of, I I didn't really want to start arguing with my colleague here, but but I kind of think that maybe the property behind the village makes more sense to be residential than what we're, you know, telling people who are very viable business uh places, uh, that, you know, that they're going to be residential someday. Well, just the the whole thing just doesn't make any, I can't, I can't absorb it. It doesn't make any sense to me. Uh, and I know people, well, it's just games with the state. Well, I don't like playing just games with the state. It just bugs me to hell, you know? I mean, I I'd like to, you know, put in something that at least we can feel comfortable that, you know, that there's some kind of truth to this. Uh, and I just don't feel ready to to say that about the material here, and I understand a lot of work has gone into this and a lot of thought and um a lot of effort, you know, to make it meet all these crazy standards that the state has imposed. Uh, but but I I'm I'm just not ready to to buy it at this point. Uh, there's just too many uncertainties, unknowns, uh, things that 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 I haven't heard good reasons for why we're doing it this way rather than that way. I mean, maybe this is the best, uh, you know, resolution of all these problems, but but I haven't been through the process to come to that conclusion.
Lori?
So I have a question to follow up on um the comment you made, Terry, about, you know, why do we have to make the the property um mixed-use near the shopping center um or on on Park Place? And my question to staff is, well, if we're going to have this affordable housing overlay and say that we'll potentially zone it as mixed-use, does that require us then in the future to put in a commercial component? What what if in the future we we want to do just residential? Does that constrain us?
That wouldn't constrain you on the housing element obligation? It'd be the other way around if you committed too much, or you committed to a residential and you over-designated mixed-use, you know, because you do have that fifty percent cap we talked about. That's, that would be you'd run into trouble, but the other way around, you don't run into trouble.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
You know, I I I hear where you're coming from. You know, as as I'm reading this thing, there there was a lot to absorb. And um, you you know, like the the penalty, you know, like, I understood the eight-year, again, the extra bonus if you if you did it early. What, John, when did, when did the four-year thing kick in? I I didn't remember that.
That's new with this cycle.
So when we, you know, were doing the the region-wide, um, I forgot what they called it, you know, it was the San Mateo County.
The RENA.
RENA.
Yeah, sub-region.
Sub-region, there you go. Um, I I never heard about the four-year penalty, but it was there, huh? Okay. So, yeah, so, you know, just going through this document, there are a lot of different options, you know? There's so many nuances that you can can explore. And sure, yeah, you know, we're definitely going to need to come back and 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 really thoroughly go through this. We should have a solid uh housing element that really defines what the community wants and, you know, and and help guide the structure of that element. You know, trying to decide, you know, what is the best mix, i- it'll take, it'll take something like what we're doing on the third, right? Those types of visioning workshops, get, you know, getting feedback from the community. So what are the things that, again, it goes back to what do you like? What do you, what do you think can be enhanced? What do you think is missing? You know, and that and that's important. And I think one of the things that we've talked about, not just tonight, but many times, is is the need for affordable housing. And so I remember when I was running for council the first time, and this is before the council, and they were struggling with, okay, where do we put these, these um, these um, where are we going to allocate the the units? And they were looking at all kinds of crazy places. And and but then it, you, you know, you you go back to the to the goals of the housing element. And 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 so that that was one of the things that that I did, you know, today, and it's on um six, six one. And you and you look at those those goals, and they're great goals, and and we should be very proud that that they're in there. You know, provide housing opportunities for all persons, maintain a diverse population, uh, preserve Brisbane's residential residential character, ensure that new residential development is compatible with existing development, encourage compact infill mixed-use and transit-oriented development to reduce vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. You know, encourage sustainable residential development, provide housing opportunities for people who work in Brisbane to reduce the vehicle miles traveled, ensure that housing development is not in urbanized area, that is not in urbanized areas, mitigates the infrastructure cost impacts of development. So, you know, we kind of, you know, talking about that a little bit tonight.